Good. We're live. Getting something, because we haven't started, uh, we haven't turned on their mics yet. So we'll start that. See, it did it again.
Four minutes. Uh, legal committee reports, creation of resolution 12, and final arrest and runners' trail access.
It's pretty flat. Outdoor recreation improvements, et cetera, so he dues fees, and the second program is fees for various recreation programs. Next page, we're gonna skip, and the page after that, we're gonna skip because it's just a checklist of schedule, you will see. Next page, I'm on page five, the number's at the top of the page, uh, we don't have these numbered at the bottom this year. This tells you some certain information about tax things that are filed, um, number of, uh, the first number there on one A is the number of 1099s you file, the second number is the number of, uh, W2s, then there's a few questions about things that you file, all those questions are good, there's a whole lot that are blank, and those are blank because they're not applicable to your organization. And the most important question is 14A, did you provide any indoor tanning services? If you want to change that answer, let me know right now. That's the IRS's joke, I guess. The next page is, um, page six at the top, um, governing body and management and policies and disclosure, this is kind of a best practices list, uh, that the IRS puts out, none of these things are required by law, but it's kind of a way to shame organizations into reporting the right thing, because, you know, there's a lot of people that look at this. Your answers here are all good, uh, there's nothing here that raises any question at all, uh, certain of these require explanations which are back on schedule O. But if, you know, if you didn't have a lot of these things, somebody could look at your organization and say that it was poorly governed, that would not be the case here. A few things about disclosure at the bottom of that, and we'll go to the next page, page seven. This is where we have to list, and you'll see some of your own names here, I imagine, should, because we have to list non-compensated directors and officers, we have to list any compensated officer, you will note that a couple of people who are not currently with the organization are listed here, um, David Hopkins and Milton Matthews, and that is because they're considered to be a current employee if they were employed any time during the year. You'll see that the new David Harris is not listed here because he started after the year was over. He is listed, um, on a prior page as the person who keeps the books, because he's the current person who's in control of the books. And you will see, uh, we also have to list a few, uh, the hot people that are paid more than a hundred thousand dollars, um, we have to list them, you know, whether or not they're an officer or director, so there's three of them listed on the second page. There are a total of six people that make a hundred thousand or more on page two, and, um, there's, you have a certain number of independent contractors that are paid a hundred thousand or more, they're listed at the back of the return on the attachment. The next page, page nine at the top, your revenue, um, your revenue, as you see, is mostly dues, twelve million dollars in dues, um, a certain amount from recreational programs and some other services, a little bit of investment income, uh, a loss from the sale of securities, a small loss, and which brings you to the total of the revenue. And you'll notice that there's one column for unrelated business income, there's a little bit of that, sixty-eight thousand dollars worth, which we, as I said, which reported on the 990T. Next page is your functional expenses, this is where we take expenses and we break them out into, uh, program, service, management in general, and if you were a fundraising organization, there'd be numbers in the fundraising column, but this breaks out your natural expenses like, um, officer compensation, other compensation, pension plan, advertising, office expense, and office expense rolls up a whole number of things, and some other expenses at the bottom. Not gonna dwell on this, um, other than, you can see the totals at the bottom for program and management in general. Next page is a balance sheet, and you probably have all seen this on the audit, this won't quite agree with the audit because we did take out the Friends of Reston, some of the things are classified a little bit differently, but it's, it's a, it's a balance sheet, there's nothing crazy here. You will note that you've got a very strong, uh, position in, uh, cash and temporary investments of close to nine million dollars, um, and the rest of the, the rest of the assets are mostly, uh, land buildings and equipment. Next page, page 12 is a reconciliation, there are no reconciling items, it's pretty simple, and a few questions about your accounting method and your audit, uh, nothing here that raises any alarms. That's the end of the 990 itself, the core form. Then there's various schedules, schedule C is required because you collect dues and you're a 501(c)(4) social welfare organization. If you go to the third page of this schedule C, it's the only part we fill out, um, it asks you if your dues were not, if dues were nondeductible by members, the answer's no to that, and we, we did some numbers and, and not, not ninety percent of your, of your folks are able to deduct their dues, because some of them rent out their properties and can take a business deduction for their dues. But, we do, um, the second question, did the organization make in-house lobby expenses of two thousand dollars or less, and the answer is yes to that, so by answering yes to one of those questions, one of those two questions, we don't have anything else to fill out on this particular form. The next page, uh, we go to schedule D, and this is certain things that are required to be disclosed, a lot of them from the balance sheet, um, and certain questions that you answered, uh, up in the front. You do have conservation easements on part two, pretty similar to last year, um, and the information is very similar to what was presented last year. The next page, little bit of information, a little bit more detail of your fixed assets, your land, buildings, equipment, et cetera, that's all that's there. Next page, we have to disclose some other liabilities, deferred comp, deferred rent, capital lease obligation, that's it for that page. The next page is blank, um, at least the reconciliation section, because that's not applicable when we have consolidated financial statements, you're not required to do that. It's hard to reconcile to the financials in that case. Now, the next page, we have what's called the FIN 48 footnote, and that is, you're required to disclose any uncertain tax positions on your financial statements, and there's a state, even if you don't have any, you have a statement saying, "We don't have any." And the IRS, a big brother that it is, wants to see that, demands that statement be put on the Form 990, so your statement is, is, is plain vanilla, there's no uncertain tax positions, more likely than not uncertain tax positions, so, um, that's a very positive statement there. The next schedule, schedule I, is, um, grants and assistance to organizations, governments, and individuals in the U.S. And the only thing you have is on the next page, you make a certain number of scholarships that we mentioned earlier, they're broken out by type, from nature, camp, aquatics, tennis, you have to list a number of recipients, the amount, the total amount, and how it was paid with cash, and, um, this, we don't have to disclose anybody's name or anything like that, so everybody's identity is secure. And there's a little statement about how we monitor, how you monitor the grants, et cetera, um, based upon the applications. Moving on, the next schedule is schedule J, because you pay certain people more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, you have to fill out this schedule J, it asks some questions about some certain, um, fringe benefits, you don't pay any of those, so there's no issue there. The only thing that's answered here that requires an explanation is, did anyone receive a severance payment or change of control payment? We answered that yes, because David Hopkins received a severance payment, we just disclosed a little further on. The next page, schedule J, for anybody that made more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have to break out a little bit more detail, uh, we have to break out their base compensation from their W2, um, into, well, we have to break out the W2 into base compensation and other reportable compensation, and the only other reportable compensation was the aforementioned, uh, severance pay, and you'll see that, uh, in that column, uh, column 3I, I guess. And then we have to break out other non-taxable benefits into retirement and deferred comp versus other non-taxable benefits, such as health insurance, life insurance, things like that, that the person, individual receives, but is not taxed, taxed on. And what the, the reason for this is the IRS wants to see the total package that a person gets, because compensation is a big issue, um, with nonprofits, they don't want to see that somebody's getting ex, you know, excessive compensation, so the total column is really the big picture column, and I don't think, um, we've got particular problems here, um, with the level of compensation for this size organization. The next page, you'll see some, a description about the severance payment, we're up to schedule O, which is right after that, and this is various explanations that are required or voluntarily given, you can put anything you want on here, I think most of your explanation, I think all of your explanations are, are those that are required. There's a question earlier about, do you have members, describe it, so, the first note here is a description of your three classes of members, the second, uh, description is about, um, what are the voting rights of various members, so we, we break that out here in a description, and then, uh, the very next note, um, towards the bottom of page two of this, um, one of the questions is, do, do any actions of the organization require approval by members, and we, we disclose here that certain transactions require referendum. Then there's a question about how the 990 is reviewed, and that is described at the bottom of this page, um, in your case, we have it, it's reviewed, it was reviewed, I don't know, several weeks ago by the fiscal committee, I came out and presented it to them, they basically, they, they voted approval of it with a few changes that we made subsequent to that meeting, and, um, and then, it's also discussed that we present this to the board, which we're doing right now. The next question here is, they ask about your conflict of interest policy, describe it, how, um, how you monitor it, and that's that description for that. The, um, next question here is, um, and we've got a misspelling here, darn it, I'll fix that, misspelled, misspelled section here, uh, we'll get that fixed when we go final on this, um, but we, it asks about how the compensation is set for, um, highest, for the CEO and, and highly, and the management team, and that is described here. Next page, talks about, there's a question about how your governing documents, conflict of interest, financial statements are made available, you make them available on your website, so we disclose that here. And there's a typo here, because we've got a second line printing out, we'll get that fixed, too. The next statement is about the oversight of the audit, saying there's no change in that, and then there's, um, two statements about your organization's mission, which relate back to other parts of the return. The next page, um, we had to disclose the, the five highest compensated independent contractors who got more than a hundred grand, um, there were only four this year, they're listed with what they do. The very last schedule is schedule R, for related, the IRS is very clever, um, and we disclose, the only related organization to this one is, um, the Friends of Reston, which is another nonprofit, so we disclose that here in part two, the rest of the pages here are blank, and, um, that's the 990, I wonder what kind of questions you might have.
Well done, sir.
Pardon me?
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the second one I've done today. Practice. That time of the year.
Is there any comments or questions? We'll start with, uh, Lucinda.
I, can you come back to me, I have to find the page I'm looking for.
All right. Richard?
No questions.
Okay. Don? Kenner Kate?
I have none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, good report.
Thank you.
Good job, thanks.
And she's still looking for a question?
Okay, so, um, we had the land that was, the easement land, but I noticed on the document that there's a check, there's checkboxes for which, um, purpose the land is, the easement is for, and there wasn't any checked, and I was just curious, um...
Okay.
Yeah.
Specifically...
It was the number of acres, um...
We've got the total number of conservation easements, forty-one, total acreage, uh, number of conservation easements on a certified historic structure, that's blank.
Well, the, at the very top of that section, there was a bunch of...
Oh.
The purpose of the easement.
Okay, that should probably, we should probably have something checked there. I need to know what box that would be, because I'm not as familiar with operations as you are, is it, uh, land for public use?
Um...
Natural habitat, or just open space?
David?
Larry can answer.
Or Larry, I see a hand back there.
These are our stream conservation easements, for the stream conservation bank and work that we've done for the Quelland studies.
So I guess that would be preservation of natural habitat, is one of the choices there.
Yeah, I'm trying to find that page.
We will make that change.
That's what all those easements are.
That's a good catch, thank you. Boards always catch something, and I always find something as I'm looking at this after I've looked at it seven times.
All right, well, again, I think that was it for our comments, I can't thank you enough for coming out and...
Thank you.
Giving us a good look at it.
We will make, uh, that change and two typos that I saw, and we'll send another draft, and we'll be good to file this thing very soon. Thank you so much.
Have a wonderful weekend.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving right along to item D, um, Commander Wong?
Yes.
Welcome.
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Take it.
Take a moment, get settled.
All righty. How much time do I have?
As much as you need.
Very well, hopefully not too much. Well, uh, thank you for having me tonight, I'm Commander Mike Wong, the commander of the Reston District Police Station, uh, as you guys probably know, we're located next to Reston Town Center over at Bowman Town, uh, we're responsible for the area of Reston, the area surrounding Herndon, parts of Great Falls, and parts of going down towards Vienna, so we got a pretty big area to cover. We have a minimum staffing of eight officers at any given time, plus a supervisor, we normally have a little bit more than that, we have two shift overlaps, uh, over the course of every day, that normally happen around evening rush hour and, uh, morning rush hour, so we have more officers out during that time. I wanted to go over some things that have happened in, uh, 2014, uh, I took over as the commander of the Reston Station in March of 2013, and, uh, you know, had a chance to kind of see what was going on out here, and I, first time I've been at Reston, remember the department, twenty years, this is the first time I've been assigned here, I do enjoy it here very much, uh, it's, uh, my last assignment was Mount Vernon, which is a little different, uh, to say the least, but, um, uh, you know, coming into the end of 2013, two things I wanted to focus on, obviously, we had a robbery problem that got some, uh, notoriety last summer, I wanted to address that, and also, I wanted to address, uh, issues with DUI enforcement, uh, you know, partially because we had some really significant cases in 2013, we had someone driving their vehicle on the WOD, which we don't like to see, and we also had a, a very unfortunate double fatality in the Kirkex County Parkway, and, uh, you know, to, to date in 2014, uh, we've increased our DUI arrests by twenty-seven percent, uh, this time last year, we had a hundred and fifty arrests for our district, we're up to two-hundred-and-ten so far, and, uh, those numbers are always kind of a double-edged sword, because, uh, we're, we're glad to see we're making the arrests, our officers are being proactive, they're out there patrolling and investigating things, but we're sad to see there's still that many drunks on the road, and, and wondering how many we're missing that are out there, uh, you know, fortunately, we haven't had any additional, um, DUI-related fatalities in Reston in 2014, but there's always that potential. Uh, one kind of unique thing that only the Reston Station does, that we enjoy, is one of our, kind of, public outreach campaigns, are auxiliary police officers who are volunteers, uh, during, uh, football season and the holiday season, they'll put on what we call, uh, mock DWI patrols, where they'll have some auxiliaries, uh, in a, in a non-police vehicle, and other auxiliaries in uniform, in a marked police cruiser, and they'll go to various locations around the district, and actually, uh, make a, a little staged scene of a DUI, uh, stopping the other auxiliary, and they'll pull a big bottle of booze out, put it on top of the car, and run the guy through sobriety, which he fails miserably, and he gets, you know, uh, cuffed and stuffed, usually in front of the thirty or forty people that have stopped to watch the scene at this point, so it's something we do to try to raise awareness, uh, you know, in addition to the DUI checkpoints that make their way around the county, and all that kind of stuff, so, uh, yeah, it's kind of a unique program that was here before I got here, and something that I, I plan to continue, because it's, uh, it's a good outreach, and our auxiliaries enjoy doing it, and it doesn't cost anything, so why not? As far as the robbery problem, I can go over some crime stats, but, um, and this is gonna tie into our efforts at Hunter's Woods, which is kind of, uh, that general vicinity is where we saw that concentration of what we call pathway robberies, where people were being accosted on the pathways in between some of the, uh, the neighborhoods surrounding the shopping center. Overall, in the district, uh, robberies are down fifty-three percent in 2014, which is huge, uh, we had, uh, thirty-two robberies at this time last year, uh, so far 2014, we have fifteen, and a couple of those are actually kind of questionable, you know, possible drug rip kind of robberies, so if someone reports a robbery to us, it goes on the stat sheet as a robbery, but there's at least two in there that I, I would question the validity of the reports. But regardless, just, uh, a couple highlights from Group A offenses, overall crime in Reston is down fourteen percent, uh, this year compared to last year, I think there's only one other station that's doing better than that, and that's the Mason District Station at fifteen percent, but we're very happy to have those crime numbers down this year, and some of the ones, uh, I like to focus on are, are crimes that we feel we can have a direct role in influencing, um, larceny and theft offenses are down nineteen percent, uh, from one thousand twenty-three down to eight twenty-five this year, um, burglaries are down twenty-seven percent from ninety-five down to sixty-nine, and destruction cases are down nineteen percent from five-seven-four down to four-sixty-five, as are destruction of property types of cases. All that is a result of, uh, you know, proactive patrols, arrests being made, uh, some of it's just, uh, you know, blind luck, but, uh, you know, it's always, uh, one of the frustrating things about our profession is you never know how many crimes you prevent, you know, so we, uh, we put out our efforts and do the best we can, but, very glad to see those numbers trending downward, and, you know, talking about the robberies, I will talk a little bit about Hunter's Woods, that's one of the, the projects I'm most proud of this year, um, we realized there was an issue, and actually, you know, talking to some of the officers that have been arrested for several years, I, I kind of heard from a couple of them that, well, you know, every summer, there's just, you know, the kids that got out of school and these big spike of robberies happen, and I was like, well, maybe this summer, we don't have to have that, so, um, you know, what we ended up doing, um, on the enforcement side, you know, we, I kind of tasked our bike team to be in that area, uh, a lot more often, and, uh, I put out an overtime assignment, just to have two officers paired up, uh, you know, two nights a week normally, throughout several months, just walking the pathways, and not just the shopping center, but getting to the surrounding communities, you know, Gray Wing Square, South Gate Square, um, and Winterthur, and, you know, just, um, just basically foot patrol, and, and my only direction to them was, uh, get out, be visible, talk to people, walk around, if you see a violation, take action, this was not designed to be a, a crackdown or a zero tolerance kind of policy, and, uh, what they found was, uh, they were making a lot of arrests out there, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of drinking on the pathways, we found that a lot of, uh, beer was being shoplifted out of the Rite Aid in the Safeway, it was being taken down on the pathways, which was causing people to congregate and just hang out and drink down there, and that was leading to some of the issues, so we did end up making a lot of, a lot of those types of arrests, um, you know, drug use type of arrests, uh, and what we found was with the people that were hanging around, looking to do no good, when they saw that police officers were walking through on a lot more regular basis, they decided it wasn't a great place to hang out, and so, uh, you know, we had a very few, I think, maybe one or two, uh, robberies in that general area this year that are similar to what we had last year, which is, which is a great move in the right direction, and something that we're gonna look at, you know, obviously, bringing back next year and possibly expanding to some other areas, like, uh, you know, Lake Anne and Partridge Avenue kind of jump out at me, there's areas that could benefit from those same kind of patrols, um, and, you know, in addition to the patrols, uh, done a lot of work with, um, the, the shopping center itself, and actually with the Reston Association on, uh, some of the, uh, you know, cutting back foliage, improving lighting, uh, banning some individuals, that, you know, I, I think we brought up that, that notion of, of, you know, serving people with ban letters from the actual pathways and from the, the shopping center, and that was at first met with a lot of, well, what good is that gonna do kind of questions, but we've actually found people that are just repeat problems, you know, over the course of the summer, we arrested them four and five times, and they're eventually banned from the area, and they have to find somewhere else to go, and if we find them again, we'll arrest them for trespassing, and that's, uh, you know, it's unfortunate to see that, you know, a few people caused the problem, but there, there legitimately were three or four people that were just consistently down there making problems, so that's one way to, to clear things up, uh, so we're, we're pretty happy with what's happened now, and I actually just found out this week that, um, you know, several different county agencies involved, but we're, uh, we're being awarded a, a county team excellence award for our efforts there, and gonna be recognized by the Board of Supervisors, uh, in, uh, early November, so, uh, our officers that were involved are very happy with that recognition as well, so, um, that's a big success story. A couple other things, uh, that, uh, I wasn't asked about for tonight, uh, one interesting kind of development over the last three, four months, that is something for everyone's awareness, and, uh, we've had two different, uh, skimming cases, and that's where they put the little device on an ATM machine, and it will read your credit card, and there's normally a camera associated with it, too, so they can record what you're punching in for your PIN number, uh, we've actually had two apprehensions on this in the last four months, we had one case at Plaza America where, um, it's actually a good case, the, uh, the person that had put the skimmer on the, on the ATM was, uh, sitting in the backseat of a car using binoculars to try to get the PIN numbers, and somebody called him in as suspicious, and an officer that had dealt with one of these cases before came out and investigated the guy, he had some story for why he was sitting there, and they saw he had binoculars and a great line of sight to the ATM, and called over another officer, and they ripped this machine right off the ATM, and ended up locking the guy up, and he was down from, uh, some other state, I think he was actually up from Georgia, uh, but he was arrested, our, our financial crimes investigated him, and then just, uh, probably two weeks ago, uh, one of our very good criminal patrol officers pulled over a car that was just stopped in the middle of Reston Parkway, uh, some other person was leaning in the window, talking to them, and that person went and got in another car, and they ended up following him and stopping him, and this was a crew that was down from New York, and their story just didn't add up, and they ended up, uh, getting a search on his car, found, I think, a hundred and thirty-one forged credit cards and two skimming devices, and this was a crew down from New York, so that's, um, it, these crews kind of move around the country, they'll go into an area, they'll grab a bunch of credit card numbers, they'll burn them up, and then they go somewhere else, so that for us to have caught two of them in the course of four months, uh, through kind of proactive initiatives is, is good, but it does show that, that these, these crews are out here and they move through with regularity, so, you know, the message is, if you see suspicious activity, uh, call it in, and if you're using an ATM, you might want to see if anything wiggles off of there when you're, uh, putting your card in the machine. Couple of the things over the course of the year, obviously, Metro opened, uh, back in July, that was quite a, a preparation for us, as far as, you know, training our officers and the safety and the, the layout of the station, uh, when it did first open, we, uh, we dedicated a lot of resources to it, we actually borrowed the bike teams from the, uh, the Reston, uh, the, uh, Sully and the Fair Oaks stations, uh, to be up there for the first week it was open, and our bike team's up there for an additional week, um, you know, knock on wood, but the, um, uh, you know, so far, the impact has been fairly light, uh, traffic is definitely heavier on the roadways leading to and from, especially during the rush hour, um, you know, haven't seen much of an influx of crime or anything like that, we have had some, uh, bicycle larcenies from the general area around, um, around the, uh, the Metro Station there, a couple pedestrian and, and parking issues, I know that, uh, that free park and ride, uh, lot across the street, across Sunset Hills, uh, you know, that, that caused some problem at first with everyone trying to cram into there, because it's free, and people were parking creatively and not realizing they were blocking the exit and things of that nature, but they've, they've kind of got some better signage in there, gotten that under control, but, uh, you know, thus far, the Metro has, uh, really not created too much more work for us, um, but it is, uh, it is definitely busy, and we do maintain a presence out there, one of the, the nice things we were able to coordinate with the county was, they gave us, uh, you know, two parking spaces right there in the kiss and ride area, which I know are premium spaces, so, uh, it took a little convincing to give them up, but, you know, it gives our officers the ability to park there, take the escalator right up, walk the platform, and, and be, have that visible presence, which we always try to do. While I'm talking Metro, I guess I can talk a little bit about long-term staffing, that's one thing, uh, I'm in kind of constant discussions with, uh, Ms. Hudgens about, is, uh, you know, Tyson's got the Metro, or, you know, McLean got the Metro going through Tyson's and all through their district, and they got the Tyson's urban team, nine additional officers to patrol that urban corridor, and, uh, you know, we got our one Metro Station that has the largest garage in the entire Metro system, and we really got nothing, so... So we're, you know, we're making an argument that as they move through to Phase Two, police staffing really needs to be a priority out here. And what is in the plan is for us to eventually get not quite as large as Tyson's Urban Team, but some type of a team that will be dedicated solely to probably the town center and the Metro Corridor, just to kind of hit that area. And our other priority, our patrol areas in Reston are very interesting. We have eight of them. Two of them are in Great Falls. They have very low calls for service. They're very large geographic areas because they're just spread out and we don't want to make them any bigger than they are because we want to have, you know, good coverage. But the two areas that Reston Parkway kind of bisects north of the Toll Road, Area 510 is on the east side. It has all of North Shore, a lot of neighborhoods over in that area, also just has the Metro Station in it now. And 511, I got it backwards, that's 511. 510 is on the west side that has Reston Town Center and it actually extends, you know, pretty far up the Parkway up north from there. And, you know, that one will be receiving a Metro Station in about three years. And those two, you know, 510, 511 combined make up a PSA, Police Service Area, and that is the busiest police service area in the entire county of Fairfax and it was that way before the Metro opened. So what we're arguing for in the next couple of years is to subdivide another patrol area out of that, make that three patrol areas and give us an additional, you know, bump our minimum staffing up to nine, so we have better coverage for those areas because we are spread a little thin right now. What to move on to next? You probably noticed we have a beautiful new facility being built right behind our facility. If you've been over there, we're very excited about that. That should be opening late November is what we're told. We're hoping to be in, if not in November, then at the very latest in December. There will still be another six-month process of tearing down our old building and redoing the parking lots and all that type of stuff. But I've worked at six of our eight police stations. I can tell you Reston is, the current building is probably the worst of the eight of them and the new building will be the best. So it's two full floors, it's very well-designed, very functional and we'll be glad to have that. The community rooms will be a lot bigger and a lot friendlier, so we'll be able to have more community meetings in there and that type of stuff. But mostly our officers are looking forward to a new facility with, you know, bigger lockers, bigger locker rooms. And we had, we had some guy actually come to the station asking why the new one had to be so big and why do we use so much space? And I, if I had been in the building, I would have offered to give him a tour of our locker room that has about, you know, 60 lockers for our 75 male officers and all that kind of stuff. But anyway, we're very excited about that. Couple of things we've had going on over the year and some concerns coming up. Just some fun things we've done in the community, kind of community outreach. I started a program called Coffee with a Cop here in Reston that we just, you know, basically it's an opportunity. A lot of people, they like to interact with, you know, us, hear what our priorities are. We like to hear what's going on in people's neighborhoods. They're not comfortable coming to a meeting like this where, you know, I'm standing here in front of 50 people talking, they'd rather just sit down and have a one-on-one conversation. So we'll hit a coffee shop for two hours one morning and kind of advertise it locally and if people want to come out and have a chat with us and just kind of interact that way. It's a lot of fun for us and actually we get some good intel about, you know, what the problems are in the community, what people are worried about. So we're going to continue that and we don't have a date nailed down yet, but I think our next stop is going to be Einstein Bagels over at Spectrum Center sometime in early November. So we keep doing that type of stuff. We, I've been heavily supporting Bike to Work and Bike to School Day. That's, I like to ride bikes, so it's kind of near and dear to my heart, but whenever we, those kind of requests for help, we get the bike teams out there and the auxiliary police officers to make sure everyone is safe as they traverse those days. Those are two of our favorite days of the year. Just a couple of concerns moving forward, things I haven't really had a chance to do much with, but is on my mind for either this fall or spring. Obviously Supervisor Cook over in Springfield has put out a large initiative about neighborhood speeding. You know, I think the slogan is, you know, slow down, you live here, we live here and a lot of these complaints that, and I can tell you across the county, we get a lot of complaints about speeding back in neighborhoods. And, you know, it is a, it's a valid concern. A lot of times we get frustrated when we go to enforce it because it's like the one person that lives on that street and if you don't catch that one person, you're like sitting there for three hours running radar and you don't get a lot. And so I'm working out a plan with our traffic lieutenant to hit some of our more, not necessarily way back in the neighborhood streets, but some of our feeder streets that tend to have the higher speeds. I'm thinking along the lines of Viking Drive, Soapstone, Wheelie and, you know, getting some concentrated enforcement out there later in the year. And the WNOD Trail is something that comes up regularly. We're responsible for the entire stretch between Herndon and Vienna and we've got several crossings that are problematic. It's, it comes up at a lot of transportation meetings. It's difficult for us to enforce violations at those crossings, whether they be violations by cyclists or violations by motorists, you know, through our normal channels of just sitting in a car and waiting. So we're developing some kind of an awareness campaign that's going to have a enforcement aspect of it where we can enforce both motorist and cyclist violations and, you know, just, you know, we have five or six good intersections, but we'll probably move it around and just kind of raise that awareness level. I think there's a lot of, you know, I ride the WNOD sometimes for my wellness time and I see a lot of boiling over frustration on both sides out there and I think it's a good thing for us to get involved with and, you know, it probably won't result in an astronomical number of citations, but at least our involvement and some reminders is probably a good thing out there. Couple of questions that were kind of brought up for this meeting and, you know, I apologize I don't have all the data because I haven't a chance to pull it all, but did get a question about serious crashes along Wheelie. And there have been three significant ones, probably outside of one crash we had back in, I think, late August, early September on the Fairfax County Parkway where a gentleman was struck by a truck and killed in a really kind of tragic circumstance. He had broken down and somehow stepped out in front of the truck from in front of his car and we're not sure if he was trying to wave the truck down or if he was maybe just, you know, kind of digging in the hood of his car and lost track of where he was and went to get back in his car. But outside of that case, and that was on the Fairfax County Parkway near the underpass where it goes under Pinecrest Road, we have had three significant crashes involving pedestrians and/or cyclists or motorbikes and they've all been kind of in that stretch of Wheelie. So I understand why the question comes up and, you know, kind of a overview of those. You know, May 8th, we had a very tragic incident on Reston Parkway at Wheelie Avenue. A 17-year-old boy on a mini bike or a small motorized bike was going northbound on Reston Parkway, attempted to make a left turn onto Wheelie and turned into oncoming traffic and was struck and killed. Following that one, there was, September 23rd, there was a bicyclist struck on Wheelie at Center Harbor, a 69-year-old Asian female. She rode her bike out, you know, she, into the roadway and into the path of a car as well. She was struck, she was transported to the hospital, had some fractures, but she did survive. And most recently, this one didn't get as much attention because it wasn't really a life-threatening case, but we did have a pedestrian struck. What's the location of that one? It was Baron Cameron at Wheelie, he's a 43-year-old jogger. She was struck by a vehicle and then the witnesses at the scene said she, that the light for Wheelie had turned from green to yellow and she came out into the path of traffic on Wheelie and was struck by a car going through the yellow light. She was transported by helicopter because it was a pedestrian involved crash. They're worried about head injuries, but she's also expected to make a full recovery. So it's a good question and something, yeah, those are, yeah, a question was brought up about the safety of that corridor. I will tell you, people speed on Wheelie, that's known to us and we do enforce that. I don't know that speed was a factor in any of these cases, but, you know, that's a concern. These were all at three different intersections and kind of three different mechanisms of what happened. So, you know, we'll have a good look at that corridor and see if there's any real issues there with, that we can do as far as signage or as far as speed limits that we can talk to VDOT about. But, you know, sometimes it is strange that there's that concentration and we've had four serious, you know, pedestrian types of crashes in the district that I know of this year and three of them are kind of in that one little stretch. So we'll have a look at that, but again, none of them are at the same location and they all seem to be caused by different things. So, you know, hard to say what's really going on there, but we will definitely have a look. Couple of things just for your awareness. Arrested an individual, well, we charged an individual, he was actually under arrest. Had a pretty bad series over the summer at the town center of credit card snatchings, I guess you'd call them, and they, suspect would see ladies kind of hang their purse on the back of their chair while they're sitting at a restaurant and they just kind of creep in and grab one credit card or grab the whole wallet and take off with it. Now through investigation, actually through pulling a lot of video footage, our detectives were able to identify a suspect and he was actually an individual from Washington DC that had been arrested for being involved with a robbery in DC where the victim was shot. He was the getaway driver and he was arrested, he was being charged with that. And then they realized that regionally he was doing this all over the place. He's got like 200 pending charges, he's going to federal court. So we piled on several charges from Reston Town Center, but that individual will not be getting out of jail anytime soon. And on a, you know, kind of a similar note, in the last maybe six weeks, we've had two cases at the, one at the YMCA, I think it was September 22nd at the YMCA and then September 23rd at the Sporting House on Isaac Newton where, you know, windows, you know, someone would leave their purse sitting on the front seat of their car and the window would be smashed out of that car. It was interesting because it happened during the early morning hours at the YMCA and the next day during the evening hours over at the Sporting House. Probably the same individual, but that's the only two we've had. We don't have any good leads on that case. But that's another kind of, you know, trend that's a little bit alarming that we're working on. Wanted to talk a little bit about the World Police and Fire Games. You guys might have heard a thing or two about that. We're gearing up for that. We've actually, you know, we've got a whole staff dedicated to planning for that at this point, for the security around the games. Yeah, we'll be here towards the end of June into the beginning of July. It's a 10-day period. The real, I think there are some, a couple sporting events that'll take place around the Reston area, but the real kind of, you know, reason I'm more involved than most other station commanders is what they're calling the Athletes Village is going to be at Reston Town Center. All the athletes that are coming for the games are required to check in at the town center at one time or another when they get here for the games. And then every night, there will be activities related to the games there at the Athletes Village where the athletes from all around the country and the world can kind of gather and, you know, probably party a little bit and get to know each other and enjoy some camaraderie. So we're gearing up for that. We're probably, we're going to have 24/7 security over there. There's going to be a command post right out of my station that will be kind of responsible for any and all calls related to that Athletes Village. We're anticipating it'll be a busy time with, I think they're saying, you know, 12,000 athletes are expected to be in town, you know, bring in with them, you know, on average, something like 1.8 person, you know, people with them to come spectate and cheer. So, you know, probably another 20,000 or 30,000 people. They won't, they won't all be focused here in Reston. Like I said, the Athletes Village will be here, but there's, I think 70 hotels that are under contract for this thing from all around Fairfax County and the region. Some of the, some of the events are taking place in Washington DC. A lot are taking place at George Mason University. The motorcycle off-road competition is at Bud's Creek over in Charles County, Maryland. So it's a pretty big regional event, but the real focus here in Reston is going to be that Athletes Village, but we're gearing up for that. Couple of other questions I got on an email earlier today, just, you know, it's interesting. I was asked about drinking at South Lakes Park and, you know, I checked, we don't have any reports of that and I will ask our officers to go there and check on that. That's, you know, we, the nice thing with the county parks is that it's illegal to be in the parks after dark, so if someone's in there, we automatically have a reason to stop them and investigate what they're doing and we're normally pretty aggressive about that. So I will put that request out. I think I've already answered most of the other ones. There was a question about getting a crossing guard at the intersection of Wheelie and Center Harbor and I already did talk to Danielle about that, about, you know, there's a process in place that I can, I can look into where a, you know, basically someone from our traffic division and someone from school will go out and observe that intersection during school arrival and dismissal and just see what the traffic level is. We'll talk a little bit about our crossing guards. Fortunately, Reston has not been as affected as some other stations. There's been a lot of controversy, I guess I would say, about the ability of our crossing guards to direct traffic where they were kind of retrained this year and the safety being the key because we have had several guards hit over the years. And the, you know, the direction being given is that their job is to cross the children, they're not there to get the buses in and out and all that type of stuff. And so they were given some pretty strict directives to, you know, you get the kids across and you get up on the curb and you keep the kids out of the road. You don't do anything with traffic. And I think the chief has kind of backed off that a little bit and is allowing them to, he's calling it the pivot move, but if you, if you enter the roadway to get the kids across and you notice that while you're out in the roadway that there's a side that's very backed up, you can let that side go before you jump back out of the road. And he is also working on developing kind of a tier-two crossing guard that'll have more training, more ability to direct traffic. You know, it's in the code section that they're permitted to direct traffic in certain ways and it's kind of a, you know, a lot of it is just their safety and what they're there for. And there is a lot of validity to the point that if they're out in the roadway for 45 minutes, not doing anything but directing traffic, there's no one that's monitoring the kids on the sidewalk, keeping them up there and that's their primary goal. But I know West Springfield's been getting clobbered with, you know, complaints and concerns and we've only had a couple and our real strategy is we had kind of three schools that were areas of concern. I think it was Lake Anne, Hutchinson and McNair. And we've been working closely with the principal at Lake Anne as far as, you know, working out a plan, getting some school staff involved with, you know, helping out with the Kiss and Ride, moving and that kind of stuff. Our solution to the other two is we had two crossings that were unfilled anyway, so we rotated the guards around and those two are our unfilled positions, so our police officers are every day anyway and they can direct traffic. So we're using them to do that. But that is the scoop on crossing guards and I think that's all I have for you.
Well done. Thank you.
Very much.
Very informative. Let me start, I'll just go around. Danielle, any questions?
I do.
Okay.
I have a few.
Okay.
The Baron Cameron intersection, you said that they are at different locations, but actually they're, I mean, they are different intersections, but it's like one, two, three.
They are very close.
They're right next to each other. And with the, you know, potential changes with the Baron Cameron Park, I'm just very concerned we're going to have an increase of traffic and that to me means an increase of accidents. So what do you suggest we do or what recommendations would you make for us to, you know, try to improve the situation? Because I know Baron Cameron and Wheelie, that has typically, I believe, been a problem intersection.
Uh huh. Yeah, I think that is one of our, one of our intersections where we see more crashes than usual. And, you know, what we can do is have a look at that whole stretch and I can get, you know, we have a VDOT liaison officer, his name's Rich McKitchen. I can see if we can come up there and have a comprehensive look at that stretch and see if there's anything as far as signage, as far as pedestrian markings, speed limit, that type of stuff. We have to have a good look at it. It's something I haven't really looked at as a whole, but, you know, that's something we can definitely arrange to do is kind of just analyze the whole area and see. And obviously with, you're correct that, you know, with the improvements that are going to make the Baron Cameron Park, you'll probably see more park traffic coming and going. And I didn't have the opportunity to pull all, you know, all data on all the little fender benders and things we've had in area two, so that's something I can also have our crime analysts pull. So something we'll probably have to work on in the next, over the next month or two and that's something I'm happy to do because clearly, like I said, there's, if three of our four serious crashes that have resulted in serious injury to a pedestrian or cyclist are right there next to each other, it's definitely worth a look. It's definitely worth seeing what the deal is, but...
I know that the, the speed limit changes, it's 35 on one side of the Parkway and then it switches to 40 and I don't know if that's part of the equation. But also, does Reston use, your division use traffic cameras? Do you find them to be to stop speeding or issue tickets? Is that a useful method? Reducing speeding?
Well, the, we use like the radar trailer that will show your speed back to you. Like Maryland has the cameras that will actually, you know, take down your speed and they'll mail you a ticket. That's not approved in the state of Virginia, that's not something we can do. For a period of time, we had red light cameras and those were also stricken down, so we don't have that available to us. We do and can use, we have two trailers where basically it's the one that, you know, you're driving along and they'll show you what the speed limit is, they'll show you what your speed is. And it also records data as cars are going by, so it can report back to us after it's been out there for three or four days, what the average speed is, what the top speed the top speed is, what times of day we're seeing the high speeds and that kind of stuff. And those, they're effective in a way. I think if you move them around as a reminder, they do help. If, if you move it here and you take it away for four months, you have an early impact. It's almost the same as a very visible, you know, road check. And we'll do that from time to time, too. You know, sometimes we'll try to be sneaky and we'll, we'll hide in the bushes and whatnot. Sometimes we, if we're really trying to slow people now, we'll stand on the side of the road with the radar gun and make sure everyone sees what we're doing and why we're there. And they remember that for a little bit. But I think every study about, you know, speed control shows that when, when you're there, you have a kind of a residual effect that lasts for a week or two and then everybody forgets you were there. So, it's, it's a matter of moving around.
There were several incidents of people stealing mail. I think it was last summer. And so, no one in my area sticks their mail in their mailbox anymore. Have, do you have stats on that or did you catch the guys or?
Um, I don't have stats on that. I know when I was out for National Night Out back in August, I was approached by a lady at that neighborhood, I think the one directly across Barron Cameron from Lake Fairfax and all that over there. But, but they, they had asked about it. And the interesting with those, with those cases is those are investigated by the US Postal Service. And I did actually reach out to one of our, our property crimes detectives at the station. Every, every station has a series of, of station-level detectives that investigate property crimes, stalking, that kind of stuff. Not the major crimes, but, you know, I kind of just asked him, can you get in touch with these people, find out what the situation is? And he reached out to the US Postal Service. There have been five or six cases that have been reported. They did have, I, I know one lady from DC was arrested for using a check that was stolen through that method in our area. I don't know if, if that put an end to the problem or not. And that's just kind of one of the difficult things that we, you know, we want to know about it because we want to let people in the neighborhoods know. We did go back after that National Night Out and kind of go through that neighborhood and, and put out some information. But it's not one that we actually investigate because it's a postal crime. And so, we don't keep it probably as tight stats on it as, as we would one that we were responsible for investigating. But, you know, clearly there was a crew. And like I said, I know one, one female from DC was arrested in conjunction with it. But, you know, going around stealing and probably looking to do, I think what they were doing was if they could find a check, they would somehow, you know, soak the check, bleed, bleed something off of it and change the amount and change who it was made out to and cash it in their name or someone else's name. So, I can get an update on that, but hadn't heard much about it since, since August.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Eve?
Yeah, I actually have two questions. One is the pedestrian, or excuse me, the bike car accident that happened in September. This was on, in the police report, it actually stated, at least as it was reported to us, that the, the driver had a solid green light. And there was a lot of question, like how in the heck would that be known? I mean, unless I guess it's just the driver, of course, would say that. But how, how is it known? Is there, are there ways?
There's no, there's no way technologically to go back and see what the light was doing at a given time. It is probably based on, and I couldn't tell you 100% certain how that got into the report. I would, I would say it was mostly based on witness accounts.
Okay.
I would think if, if we showed up and it was a driver and a bicyclist and the driver was saying, "I had the green light," the cyclist was saying, "I had the green light," we normally wouldn't handle it that way. It would normally be at least one or two independent witnesses that observed the accident and gave us that info.
Do they, do they check, I mean, to see if the driver was distracted somehow or anything like that? Do they, do they check cell phones and things like that? Is that part of what gets investigated generally?
You know, not generally as far as, you know, searching the cell phone. We normally, you know, we, we look at the, at the totality of the case. We'll show up, we'll look at the scene, we'll look at the vehicles involved or the bicycle involved in this case, see how it happened, talk to the witnesses. We'll ask the driver, you know, what were you doing? Was there some distraction? Some will come out and tell me. Most of them will come out and say they were texting. A lot of them will say I was, you know, I was, I was changing a radio station or something like that.
Right.
And that is something that gets marked off on, on the police report if they were, you know, distracted in some way. But, you know, as far as you going back and trying to recreate without an admission from the driver or a, a witness statement that said, "I saw them. They were doing this with their phone."
Right.
"They drove through the intersection." That would normally be something that we could go back and pick up on. Just because it's, you know, for every crash, that would be quite difficult. And also, there's privacy issues with going through somebody's phone and that type of stuff. But, yeah, the one thing with that case that's interesting is the, the victim on the bicycle was visiting from China and there was some question as to her familiarity with this kind of urban setting.
Right.
And that, that was something that came into play a little bit, too.
Okay. Then the other question is, you mentioned approaching or trying to work with Supervisor Hudgens Office for getting additional headcount in your division. What can we do to support that?
I would say mostly any contact you have with Fairfax County Board of Supervisors is to, is to put, you know, a note in their ear that, you know, there is, Public Safety's done a really nice job and they were very impressed. We put together a five-year staffing plan and it includes the things that I, I added in there as far as the additional patrol area and the additional kind of, you know, four to six-person unit for the, the urban area of Ruston. You know, one thing I was a little dismayed about, the, the original draft of, of the five-year staffing plan had, you know, Ruston being the, the one station that was getting all those amenities. And then when they came back and looked around the county, they want to give every station another patrol area and six more officers except for McLean because they just got one. And that's, it's all well and good for everybody. But, you know, there's nothing new in West Springfield in the last 10 years, whereas Ruston's got a whole lot of new stuff coming up all the time. We've been minimum staffed at eight for a really long time. So, yeah, whatever you, I, I would just say recommend that, you know, there's some recognition that there's a huge amount of growth taking place here. It's going to result in a lot more calls for service and without more police officers. It's going to result in longer response times.
Sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate Danielle's concern about Barron Cameron. I live very close to that area, Longwood Grove. And I try to walk from that area down a Hunter Mill and follow along Wheelie through that Barron Cameron intersection. And the lights are confusing, the marking is confusing. And so, it doesn't really surprise me that there was a pedestrian that was, was hurt there. But to Eve's question, are there things that you see in the community that we should be aware of? You know, you've presented a very, very good report on what's occurred, but what trends do you see and what ought we be aware of?
Right. Yeah, I'll tell you, one thing that we do beat our heads against the wall about on a daily basis is the items being stolen from unlocked vehicles. That's, you know, you know, I left my laptop and my wallet sitting on the front seat of my unlocked vehicle and I'm outraged that it's now missing. And it's, yeah, I, I get that you, you're not always thinking in that mindset of, you know, I could be a crime victim. But we see a lot of valuables left around unlocked. You know, we, we have a lot of presentations about suspicious individuals, people hanging around, like this, this guy at the town center who was, you know, nabbing people's, you know, credit cards and these people at the, at the gyms. You know, I guarantee they're not just running right up and finding a car within one minute. They're, they're skulking around. And so, the same thing with the metro being open. That's, we fortunately haven't had much of any problems there. But, you know, people historically throughout the metro system, you know, they're, they're walking around, they're on their phones, they're, you know, they can, they can easily become targets. But, you know, in general, you know, lock your houses, lock your, lock your vehicles, look out for people that don't belong. And, you know, one thing I always tell, tell everybody is never feel bad about calling us. You know, if it's not an emergency, call the non-emergency number. If you call in something that seems low priority and we're swamped, it might take us 45 minutes to get there, but we will come and we will check it out. And we're never not happy to do that. So, you know, we always want to hear from, from you guys, what's going on out there and, and try to work with you. While we're talking about how you guys can get involved, too, I did want to talk a little bit about the new crime mapping tool that we put up on our website. It's actually 100 times more user-friendly than the old one. If you go on, onto our website, which is FairfaxCounty.gov/polic, there's a tab that's just Crime in Our County and that will get you into a crime mapping tool. But you can put in an address and it'll give you a list of any, you can pick the, the radius around that or diameter up to a mile. And it'll give you a list of any events within a certain timeframe. I will warn you that there's a couple glitches in the system where it's, so far we've found that it sometimes is double and triple tagging events. So, people think there were three instances when it was really just the same one. But, and a lot of times, too, you know, people will see what's listed on there. Like I'll give you a perfect example. We had a, a community last week that was asking about a sex offense in their neighborhood. And then what it turned out was, it was, it was a sexting case where someone had sent a nude picture of themselves a, a year ago and it just resurfaced. Someone else sent it back to them that shouldn't have had the picture. And they filed a report from their home. And so, what ended up in our records was a sex offense at that address. And people are envisioning someone jumping out of the bushes attacking people when it was really just a report of something. So, but I like it because it, it kind of increases those dialogues with us. And, you know, we're always happy to kind of look into it and talk to people. And, you know, in all honesty, like this issue with, with Barron Cameron, talking to you guys tonight, it's, you know, it's, it had been in the back of my head a little bit. We've had a couple instances up there and the pedestrian one was, you know, just about a week and a half ago. So, it's, you know, it's kind of strike three. But to really get our attention sometimes and make us really have a hard look at something, you have to kind of focus every once in a while and say, "Hey, look at this. What's going on here?" And, you know, if, if there is something going on there, we want to know about it and we'll look into it. So, that's, that's a great way you can see what's going on in your community. But, yes, the best I can tell you is keep an eye out for stuff that doesn't look right. You guys certainly know better than us what does and doesn't look right. And give us a call if you're seeing, you know, seeing something, you know, if it's going on right now, you're welcome to call the non-emergency number. If it's something you kind of want us to have a look at that you're not really sure about. Yeah, I'm sure you guys have Katie Defoe's info to contact her, our crime prevention officer. You can reach me or my Assistant Commander Lieutenant Schible the easiest way. There's a, there's a kind of a public, you know, commander inbox setup, which is R-E-S-C-A-P-T for Ruston Capt and Rust Capt at FairfaxCounty.gov, easy way. If you just got a concern that you don't really think we need to dispatch right that minute, but you want us to have a look at it, we're happy to have a look at it. But that's, that's one thing that I am, am huge on is trying to be out in the community. And that's why I do the Coffee with a Cop thing. That's why we do, you know, fund foot patrols through the neighborhood is we want to, we want to be talking to you people one-on-one, hearing what's going on in your neighborhoods and not just, you know, sitting behind the wheel of the car waiting for a call. So...
No one?
Commander Wall, I'd certainly like to thank you so much for the excellent police work at the Hunterswood Shopping Center. I've talked to several of the residents from the Hunterswoods Fellowship House and they feel so much safer walking around the shopping center because of the police work that you have done. So, it has made a major difference. So, thank you very much for that.
You're very welcome. And I'm very glad to hear that because that's something I remember when I was telling my major what we wanted to do there. I, I told him, "We're doing a bit of an experiment here. We're going to try to get some good things done. It's going to cost a little overtime and it's going to be something we don't do a lot of." And it's worked out really, really well. And, you know, if we could, if, if we've, you know, made that impression in the community and, and made the impact on robberies we have, it's worth everything we've done.
John?
Nothing?
Okay. Richard?
No questions.
Great. Yeah. Listen to?
Yeah, I just really want to thank you and say that it's, the Hunterswood Shopping Center is, I've seen a lot of improvement. I live near that area. And I've also been really appreciative. I've seen the officers on the pathways. And the pathways are so important to Ruston, the Ruston Association and our members. So, it's great to see the crime reduced on, on those pathways. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much for outstanding presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I want to leave open to you the opportunity, whenever you want to use it, to help use our communication system to get information about the different initiatives you have. As you know, we have RA News, we have the Ruston Magazine, we have also Ruston Today videos. You have utilized that, your station has utilized that in the past. We would be happy to get that information out and help push it as it comes through. So...
Yeah. We certainly appreciate that.
Yeah.
Because I know Katie works most directly with you, but you guys are our biggest ally when it comes to that because you cover such a huge part of our, our district. And it's great when we can push that out. So, I appreciate it.
Yeah, anytime. Don't hesitate to call on us.
All right. Thank you very much, Commander. Appreciate your time and taking the time to really keep us informed like this.
You're very welcome. Anytime you want me back. Just give me a holler.
All right. I'll take you up on the coffee, too. Thank you.
All righty. Let you know.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next item. We, I think I saw Jessica.
Yep.
Yeah. Jessica, why don't you come? Putting an item in here, I think the board member see this. It was put in as an update. We're pleased to have with us Jessica Robinson. She is the Chair of the Friends of Ruston for Community Projects. She's going to give us a little update on the activities taking place over there. And as importantly, she's going to provide us the results and the outcome of the community vote to name Ruston's official bird. All right?
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
As Ken mentioned, I'm Jessica Robinson. I am the, the President of the Board of Friends of Ruston for Community Projects. For those of you who are not familiar with us, Friends is RA's supporting 501(c)(3) organization. We are a nine-person volunteer board. We work to aid Ruston Association in bringing charitable, scientific, and educational projects to the community. While we're best known for our 2009 gift of Nature House, the Walker Nature Education Center, we are involved in numerous other community projects. Our second-largest project continues to be our support of RA camp scholarship programs. Each year since our inception in 1999, we have raised funds to help children attend RA camps whose families cannot afford the tuition, transportation, and T-shirts. This year, we were able to provide $9,450 to RA to cover the cost of 21 children to attend the camp. This was in large part due to the generosity of the real estate agents of Long and Foster. We also have a history of supporting RA tennis community through our adopt-a-bench programs and tennis scholarships for youth. This fall, we are providing scholarships for five players ages 8 to 18 to compete in the USTA Mid-Atlantic Junior Team Tennis Competition. Also, in honor of Ruston's 50th anniversary, we chose to celebrate Ruston's beautiful woodlands by donating trees for 50 years. We donated 50 trees for 50 years on Arbor Day. The trees valued at more than $3,400 were planted in three locations by staff and volunteers at reforestation sites near Pegasus Lane, Fieldview Drive, and Autumnwood Drive. The majority of the funding was provided by the Local Energy Alliance Program, or LEAP, through our partnership with the Re-Energize Ruston Campaign. The native trees will provide air and water quality benefits for years to come while adding beauty to the landscape. I know you all appreciate Ruston's trees. As a community, wildlife habitat, Ruston's anniversary also seemed like a fitting time to celebrate one of our wild neighbors. And we're not talking about you, Ken.
Thank you.
In May, we embarked on a campaign to recognize an official bird for Ruston. RA naturalists helped to select five nominees based on their year-round presence, ease of recognition, and beauty. Tonight, I'm here to announce the results of our polling efforts and ask for your support in naming an official bird for Ruston. From May through September, polling was conducted online as well as by paper ballot at various locations, including the Walker Nature Education Center, Ruston Association Headquarters, community festivals, the Ruston Farmer's Market, Cardinal Bank, and the Bird Feeder Store. Ruston Association's summer campers also participated in voting, as well as six of Ruston's elementary schools. Teachers expressed appreciation for their students having an opportunity to learn about their community and its birds, as well as the democratic process. With 2,748 votes cast, I am pleased to announce the winner was the Piliated Woodpecker. You can also say Piliated Woodpecker if you like. It had 632 votes, or 23% of the vote. Second place was the Eastern Bluebird with 597 votes. Third was the American Goldfinch. The Bard Owl was fourth, and the Great Blue Heron was last in fifth place. With your approval, we would like to see the Piliated Woodpecker designated as Ruston's official bird to join the ranks of the Bald Eagle and the Cardener, Cardinal, our national and state birds. This beneficial, adaptable bird is Virginia's largest woodpecker, as large as a crow, reaching a size of 16 to 19 inches long with a wingspan of 26 to 30 inches. They are mainly black with a prominent red crest. So, they're not blue like Woody Woodpecker. They're black with a red crest, a white stripe along their throat. They are noted for their loud laugh of a call, which is like Woody Woodpecker, and the drumming sound they make when pecking into wood on our houses and on trees. They're looking for insects, of course, and they also like to show off to proclaim their territory. They are non-migratory and stay in their territory with their mate all year long. The Piliated Woodpecker is commonly sighted in all four sectors of the annual Ruston bird counts. Its presence is a strong indicator of the abundance of healthy forested habitat in Ruston, which is home to 182 species of birds, a true Ruston treasure. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Jessica. I appreciate it. I, I just want to make a comment. I think, you know, looking at one of our greatest assets, it is the Nature Walker Center. And just the number of people, the visitors, the programs, everything that goes on there, it's a fantastic asset. And I think we should continue to promote that asset, get even more attention. I'd like to read a motion. I move, based on the outcome of the recent community vote conducted by the Friends of Ruston, to name the Piliated Woodpecker as Ruston's official bird. Do I hear a second? We have a second. Do we have any comments? Then I'll ask the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Is anybody abstaining? Jessica, thank you so much for taking the time tonight.
Thank you.
And welcome to the woodpecker. I suspect we'll be seeing more of the woodpecker in various forms around the area.
So, like, you'd be, you'd be T-shirts, right?
Excellent.
This could be great.
Merchandising.
Can't wait.
That's for the Michael.
All right. That was great. We're now at a place this evening where we're going to focus on two- Um, we're now at a place this evening where we're going to focus on two public hearings. The first one being the 2015 Budget and Proposed Assessment Rates, and the second on the draft referendum question regarding the air conditioning units' covenants. I'll be considering each of these separately, with staff providing an overview on each prior to the start of the hearings. So to begin with, we'll, we'll start with the 2015 Budgets and Proposed Assessment Rates. As per Assessment and Finance Resolution 1, biennial, excuse me, biennial budget development process, the CEO is required to present proposed revisions to the two-year budgets to the Board of Directors and hold at least one public hearing on such proposed revisions to allow members the opportunity to review and comment on the proposed revisions, understand the assumptions used in preparing the revisions, and the drivers of any assessment increase or decrease. Please note that staff has, is proposing, proposing no change in the 2015 assessment rate of $642. However, adjustments and additional project requests are being made to the 2015 operating and capital budgets, which were approved by the Board on November 2013. Materials on the 2013 budget can be found on the Association's website. Uh, Kate, I think it's, or Dave? You want to?
Just a very brief overview. This was provided to the Board of Directors last month on the 25th of September. We wanted to make sure that with having an audience, we could provide some important information about the 2014-15 budget, so that you know how we got there and what's coming in 2015. Last year, I worked closely with the Board of Directors, as well as my senior leadership team, in 2013 to develop the 2014-15 biennial budgets. There are several steps associated with that. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read through them all. They are up on the monitors beside you and over here, but it does, it is a rigorous process with great involvement by the Board of Directors, closely working with the senior leadership team. The end result is we are now coming to the close of the 2014 budget and getting ready for 2015. And as Ken just indicated, there is a process that we need to go through with that, especially since changes to the proposed budget for 2015 have been made or suggested by me, that I need to get the Board's permission to adopt, as well as set the assessment, the annual assessment rate for 2015. So what you see before you is what we have, what we have for year two, steps one, two, and now we're on three. We've provided the information once. I do want you all, as well as the Board of Directors, to hear it a second time before the public hearing starts. And steps four, five, and six are what we're entering into now. So it's, we're, we're holding our first public hearing session on the 2015 assessment rate, technically, as well as informing you of change to the 2015 budget. Any revisions I'm supposed to alert you of, that's step five. And then step six, which will come next month on November the 20th, is when the Board will set the 2015 assessment rate. The budgets were adopted last year. I've made an adjustment to 2015. That's why we're coming back. And my CFO, David Harris, is gonna provide you with an overview of the changes in the 2015 budget. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Kate. Okay, so first, I'd like to revisit the process we went through to review the 2015 budget. We recalculated the 2015 assessment based on current property values and future growth in the community. We reviewed program revenue assumptions and adjusted based on current expectations. We reforecasted our personnel costs based on current staffing benefit costs and current open staffing requisitions. And then finally, we reviewed and adjusted, as necessary, any other cost line items based upon current expectations and goals. So what we found, similar issues to the 2014 budget, bullet points one and two. The 2015 original budget did not account for two items related to the assessment, the first being the reduced assessment rate for properties that fall below the 2015 property value threshold. And the second is it did not account for tax relief assessment credits. And I'll expand upon those two items shortly. We also found that certain employee benefit and workers' compensation insurance costs were too high. So we made corrections in the 2015 budget for those items. And a little bit of good news, our health insurance premiums will remain flat going into 2015, and dental insurance premiums will increase by 3.3%. Originally, we had expected about a 5% increase. So before we get into the budget, I think it would be a good idea to provide you all with an overview of our assessment structure. It's always good to keep this top of mind. In the first section, we have our general annual assessment rate, and that's broken down into two components. The first is the per-unit assessment, which is set by the Board annually. And the second, when a property's value is below a certain, certain threshold, the assessment is equal to 0.5% of the property's value. The second and third items in the table are related to federally and state subsidized and elderly housing apartment properties, and currently, they're charged $10 per unit less than the annual assessment. And then finally, we have the Fairfax County Tax, Real Estate Tax Reduction Rate, or what we call our Tax Relief Rate. This amount has generally been set at about one-half of the annual assessment rate and has been adjusted by the Board every couple of years. And we'll touch again, touch on this again later, but RA staff recommends that the Board, going forward, set this as a flat percentage of the general annual rate. Okay, here are some statistics related to our assessment. The first section shows the annual assessment rate and number of units for 2014 and 2015 as proposed. In the next section, you'll see our Tax Relief Assessment Rate and number of units. The rate is currently proposed main, remains flat, and we project a slight increase in the number of units eligible for tax relief. And then finally, we have our units which fall below the property tax threshold, and they pay, as I said, 0.5% of their property value. Okay, some trends related to the assessment. We wanted to show the overall increase across the entire community of Reston, of all properties, was 10.6% from 2013 to 2014. And then I also wanted to show how that breaks down by different groupings of property values. So you can see how that 10.6% is spread among different groupings of property values. Okay, in this graph, the blue bar shows the five-year trend of our annual assessment amount and the annual percentage increase. And the lightly shaded gray bar shows the assessment cap, or the maximum amount we're allowed to charge each year. So we're looking at a 1.3% increase from 2014 to 2015. And the 2015 amount as proposed is $43, or 6% below the maximum, or the cap that we're allowed to charge. And then one last item is the Tax Relief Assessment. So here, we can see that the 2015 Tax Relief Credit as proposed is 56, 55.6% of the annual assessment, and you can see how it's trended in years past. And again, we're recommending that the Board consider setting a fixed percentage of the general assessment as the benchmark for this going forward. So does anyone have any questions before I move into the actual budget? Okay. So we'll start with revenues, and I'll touch on the, you know, so we're showing the change from the original budget to our current projection. And there's really three significant areas. And first and foremost is assessments. I touched on the items where we had to adjust based on not accounting for the Tax Relief Credit and the, using the correct property values. That's about a $283,000, $283,000 unfavorable change. The second major category of adjustment is both Finance Administration and Covenants Administration. The original budgets did not account for collection of prior-year revenues. And then finally, Environmental Management and Education, we're showing about an $11,000 change, favorable change to, as an increase in tuition revenues and increased merchandise sales. Okay, before I get into expenses, Kate mentioned there's a couple of new projects that we'd like to undertake next year. The first is that we would like to hire a consultant to assist with developing urban design guidelines for the DRB when reviewing mixed-use development and redevelopment. And we expect that to cost about $30,000. And the second is we'd like to conduct a Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Survey. The survey will be conducted in accordance with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and will provide useful data to the organization to develop the 2016-2017 biennial budgets and for use in discussions with developers. And again, this one, we expect to cost about $30,000 as well. Okay, so for expenses, the issue with the over-budgeted benefit and workers' compensation insurance costs spanned the entire organization, so all departments. You can see that generally, we have favorable changes across all the departments, and most of those are due to the personnel cost updates. An unfavorable change that partially offsets that benefit in management and headquarters is an increase to legal expenses related to our land use attorney, and then investment management fees of $26,000. Recreation Services has a favorable change, all due to personnel cost adjustments. Park and Facility Maintenance has an overall favorable change due to personnel cost adjustments, partially offset by higher-than-budget vehicle insurance costs. Park and Rec Admin and Support has an unfavorable change, primarily due to the addition of a Deputy Director for Recreation position, a new facilities monitor position, and the Recreation and Open Space Survey that I mentioned earlier. And the full impact of these items was beneficially offset by the personnel cost updates. Covenants Administration shows a $98,000 favorable change due to personnel cost updates, and this is partially offset by professional services costs related to the urban design guidelines that I mentioned earlier. And then Environmental Management and Education shows an unfavorable change due to inland marine insurance costs not accounted for in the original budget, partially offset by personnel cost updates. So here's a summary of the impact of those changes. Overall, it's a very minimal change to surplus from operations. The capital expenditures number remains constant, and it's important to point out that that is not actually what we're gonna spend on capital expenditures. That's the amount of funds designated to be transferred from operations to our reserve funds in accordance with Assessment and Finance Resolution 3. So things for the Board to consider, approval of the additional $60,000 to fund two new operating initiatives and adjustments to certain capital expenditure items. Designation and approval of a Tax Relief Assessment Rate using a fixed percentage of the annual assessment rate beginning in 2015. Setting the annual assessment rate of $642 as proposed. And at the beginning of next year, planning for the 2016-2017 biennial budget.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. Why don't we begin with, I know that many people have signed up our member comment document. Just a quick show of hands, how many people here are to comment on the budget and the proposed budget? Please, yes. If you will, if you'll provide your name and address and give you about three minutes, if that's okay.
My name's Martin Bile. Address is 1690 Chimney House Road, Reston, Virginia. And I don't know where in the budget process this comment should've come, but I've sent a letter to the Board. I had comments about the Reston Association Tennis Department. So I've looked at the finances because of an unfortunate altercation I had with them and had a letter from Reston Association and the Reston Association attorneys over it. And so, looking at the budgets for the last five years, I see that the tennis department has a deficit of $1 million, $953,000 from 2010 through this year. So based on the fact that in the Strategic Plan for Reston Association, as well as the Archer Report, which compares pay and benefits with other like associations, I looked at Columbia Association in Herndon, Town of Herndon, their tennis departments, and saw that those were profitable tennis departments that made, uh, Town of Herndon returns a 21% profit. So they cover all their expenses plus 21%. They returned to the town. In Columbia, they had 105%, so they returned, covered all their expenses, plus 5% profit based on the investment they put into their tennis department. Reston, for the last five years, has only returned 55% of their expenses. So that's where the deficit of $1 million comes from, over five years. So I looked further into what was available publicly about, from the tennis committee, from the strategic plan, like I said, and I found nothing that addresses, um, either from a strategic standpoint, why it's been determined that it's acceptable or desirable for the association, that we should run consistent deficits from the tennis department, or any kind of a plan going forward to eliminate these deficits, deficits, and create a more financially responsible tennis program in Reston. So that was, and again, I don't know where that fits in with the current cycle, whether that's something to be addressed immediately, but I didn't get a response from the Board when I sent two letters to them. So I was curious to bring that up for a point of discussion and see where we go from there.
Appreciate your comments, and what we'll do is, you hit us in the right time for the planning cycle. Again, tonight's not the time to get into the discussion. This is part of the public hearing on the budget, but took note.
That's not part of the budget hearing?
It is.
Or is what I?
No, taking your comments.
Okay.
Yes, and that's part of the budget process, of the budget hearing. But again, we appreciate your comments, but it's not a time to, to discuss the suggestions you're making.
Okay, so I, from looking at your rules of order, I printed copies of my findings. Could I distribute those now?
Sure.
Did you suggest that I bring 13 copies of them?
Please.
Did you email the Board?
I did. I emailed, well, I emailed the President, Treasurer, and the CEO. So I emailed that on, on the 7th, on the 8th of, of October. And then I sent a follow-up letter to Ms. Ferguson on the 14th, asking to discuss that. I didn't hear back from them.
Okay.
I'm gonna stem from an incident because I was accused by the Board of trespassing on private property and got a letter from the, from, from the attorneys of Reston Association, that association, the, the police department been notified that I'd be arrested if I was deemed to be coaching tennis lessons on the tennis courts. I never, it's the only communication I had with any from Reston Association, other than discussion at tennis courts with the court monitor. So I've sent you two letters to try and create a dialogue, and I haven't heard back, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you for that. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that is here for the budget public hearing that would like to make a comment?
Could I, could I do for, I signed up. Can I speak on it?
Please come up, sir. Please, again, your name, your address, for three minutes.
My name's David Thomas, Restonian, for 40, 43 years, 2258 Cedar Cove Court. And I just wanna just make a notion on the, the thing that concerns me the most is you're asking for $60,000 for, to bring on attorneys and plans, and I'll be honest with you, I'm kind of being in Reston this long, and you're trying to bring on attorneys to talk about open space of these now? Shouldn't we've already been doing that? I don't know exactly what the plans are for these things, but I'm just, I'd like to know more about that, and maybe I need to dig in a little bit more exactly what you're more about that, and maybe I need to dig in a little bit more exactly what you're trying to get with those lawyers. They're asked for, the other thing is the increase, $8, to me is with, I just don't want to see an increase. We continue to see an increase because we see that Reston during the time of development chose not to inquire other people into it. Now, the people that live here are continuing to see an increase every year. That's a mistake. And one of the other things is, you're with my mom, $8 is a lot when they're on a fixed income. And we have times in which, you know, especially in Reston, with our low-income housing, when people are just trying to get a job, trying to do things, and to see an increase, I just don't think that's the right move to make. And that's just my opinion on that. But the, the legal side, I guess I need to look into it more, of the $60,000 you're looking to spend on lawyers. Because to me, I don't know exactly what we're looking for, what we're trying to do, and, but it's one thing, I don't know where we can get more information on that, if that's something that Kate can send around, or what, all of it is just a couple sentences exactly with what you're doing. But the other thing is, I'll just leave it with this. Reston has a vision to include its public in terms of this process. This gentleman here came up here to talk about the tennis courts. He hasn't been asked about it, and I just don't, he has a right to come up here, and we have a right to come up here and say this. He hasn't been answered in terms of his letter, and I'd just like to see in terms of the board, just be a little bit more reaction to that, and a little bit more sensitive when we're up here talking. And I just ask that we continue to just look for a lower budget and not increase, because it's all we continue to see from you guys, increase after increase after increase. We need to end that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? All right, why don't I go around the table? Is there anything else from David? You done?
Unless you have anything for me.
All right, and I think we're good to go. All right, I'm going to keep this here. Now we'll have the proposed hearing on the proposed air conditioning unit covenant referendum question. And here, as the referendum schedule states, approved by the Reston Association Board of Directors on September 25th, 2014, public hearings are to be held on October 25th and November 20th, 2014, regarding the proposed air conditioning unit covenant referendum question. This evening is the first of those two hearings. Materials on the draft ballot question and related fact sheet are available for view on the association's website and are displayed on the monitors here this evening. And again, I'll pass this over to Kate to start with an overview.
So in early 2000, I'm sorry, in July 2004, association staff received a petition requesting that the association hold a referendum to repeal Reston deed section 6.2b15 on air conditioning units, specifically the deed provision states. In any residential cluster in which central air conditioning service is available to the lot line, no individual air conditioning units of any type shall be permitted. This covenant may only be amended or revoked by at least two-thirds vote of the Category A members of all residential clusters on the service. During its meeting of September the 25th, last month, the Board of Directors voted to accept the request of the petitioning members, approve the action of sending the issue to repeal section 6.2b15 from the deed to referendum amongst those Category A members, property owners subject to the air conditioning covenant. And the board adopted the proposed schedule for conducting the referendum. During its meeting of October 6th, the Board Planning Committee, as per the schedule, reviewed the draft referendum question, which is subject to this evening's public hearing, as well as a public hearing coming up on November 20th. Approximately 343 residential units, clustered units are subject to the covenant. There is a question as to whether six units in Washington Plaza Cluster are also subject to the covenant. Legal counsel is preparing an opinion for the Board of Directors on that by the November 20th meeting. We also will be sending out, as well as public hearing notice that was sent out electronically and through our newspapers, we'll also be sending out a postcard to all of those residential units that are impacted. We'll be seeing that no later than next week.
Thank you, Kate. Again, I have a generic list of signing, how many people here are here to comment on the referendum, the air conditioning referendum? All right, I'm just, we'll start over here on this side? And, yes.
Yes, my name is Carol Berman, and I'm a 44-year resident of Reston at 1721 Wainwright Drive. And I want to speak in favor of keeping the covenant as it is, because it's always provided good service to me. And I feel that if we change it, the company will go under, and we will all be required to spend a lot of money buying air conditioning units and piping and everything, and we will have to have a lot of noise from the air conditioning. And I realize there are some people whose service is less than perfect. I know that the company is trying to deal with this, and perhaps there should be some exceptions for medical reasons or for hardship. But I do think that the covenant should be kept as it is. It's a good system, and I don't want, I'm on a fixed income, I do not want to spend thousands of dollars on an air conditioning unit for my townhouse.
See a raise of hands again, and I'll go through and check you off of our list as well. Yes, sir.
My name is John Hunter, 1677 Chimney House Road, or 1670 Chimney House Road. I'm here actually as the, a member of our board. I just wanted to say, I realize that we're here to talk about the form itself, not necessarily whether we like RELAC or don't like RELAC. We could argue all day long about the different sides, and that's what will happen during the different meetings, I'm sure. What I want to point out really is more the form itself. I'd like to say, I like the wording of the referendum, it's very straight and to the point, very black and white, I think that's what we need. There's a lot of pros and cons on both sides, and I think to keep that out of the wording is good. So I just want to say I like that, and thank you for that. Also, I wanted to point out a couple of things. You mentioned two meetings, one in November and one on October 25th. October 25th is Saturday, I assume you meant.
I apologize, yes, sir, I meant today.
All right. And then also on the form itself, I noticed a part, I apologize, I wasn't trying to find that, where it mentioned, I'm not finding it now. Anyway, it mentioned, I assume it's part of the template, but it mentioned handing out or sending out notices back in 2005. Is that just a holder?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, then in that case, I'm pretty much set. I just wanted to say, obviously, I'm not for RELAC, however, that's kind of irrelevant for this meeting. I do like the wording, I want to thank you all for looking at this. I know a lot of time's been spent on it, so thank you, and also thank you for the wording.
Thank you. Again, I'll ask for a raise of hands, and I'll continue to check you off of your signup sheet for any comments on the air conditioning referendum. Sir? Name and address?
Yeah, I'm Mark Waddell, 1725 Wainwright Drive, and I'm also the President of Reston RELAC. Like to make a couple comments on your, on the draft. First, I'm glad that there was one change on the draft that was at the door, that the vote doesn't end in January 16th. That would have been catastrophic, so. Also, will we have a chance to make some amendments to the fact sheet? What is RELAC? And, you know, you're saying here that it's a very unique system. We're just down the road in Northgate, there's a very similar system with cooling, underground pipes to condos. The only difference is that it uses a tower, cooling tower, which is a lot noisier than the lake. All the equipment is same type, nothing different, they're all, you know, all off-the-shelf components that everybody uses. It's the same type of system that's used everywhere in large office buildings, campuses. So there's, the only really unique thing is that it's water from the lake that is used to kill, excuse me, used to cool the chillers and not the homes. We still use chillers to send out the cold water to the homes. There is some misconception that we actually circulate lake water to all the homes. And again, I saw that September 9th, down toward the bottom of the date. Also, in the description of the, of the, it says there's at least a two-thirds vote of the Category A members of all residential clusters on the system. Now, I'm sort of interpreting this, that would be two-thirds of the entire residents rather than two-thirds of the vote. As in our Congress, if, you know, 20 people showed up and 11 voted for something, it wouldn't get passed. It's the majority of the whole of the body, whether they vote or not. So I'd like to get some clarification on that. And will there be any chance to make any changes to these fact sheets and some public discussion? And how would we do that on, you know, off, is there a contact point within the Reston Association to talk to?
Certainly, Kate, you want to?
No, you, please do contact me.
Okay.
And I would be happy to discuss the fact sheet with you.
And also, determining the votes, who's available for the vote?
Myself as well.
Will that be a public knowledge?
Who is, who is determining the vote?
No.
The court. Are you interested in that?
Who will be, who will be allowed to vote? The set of people that are voters, will that be public knowledge?
It is public knowledge.
It is.
It is.
We have, we have put that out.
Okay. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else here that would like to provide comments on the air conditioning referendum?
I'm Robert Gerstein from 1636 Wainwright Drive, that's Colson Cluster, and we've been longtime residents, 36 years here. And quite frankly, we are really very supportive of the protective covenants that have been in place since the beginning. They continue to preserve the tranquility and continuity of our neighbors and our neighborhoods, and we really thank the board for keeping those intact. I remember RELAC when Mr. Cobb ran it. And Mr. Cobb ran it as his own child. It was a terrific system. And then it went down the road, and now it's back as a homegrown entity with ownership and management that has made improvements and upgrades, and it functions efficiently and effectively for both residential and commercial spaces. You know, I know this through my wife's experience with her store down at Washington Plaza. With regard to the covenant, the language of the covenant is, states that the covenant may only be amended or revoked by at least a two-thirds vote of the Category A members of all residential clusters on the service. Staff has already determined that there are 343 property that constitute that Category A members. So that in order to revoke that covenant, you would need 229 votes to vote in favor of that appeal, in favor of repeal. And so it is a question to me, where did this notion of a quorum come from? The quorum of 10%, and a quorum of 10% of, and the notion of a quorum is in itself an amendment to the covenant, which not go through due process. So I think that in the fact sheet, where there is a, where there are voting requirements and rules that refer to a quorum, and the requirement that approval only be two-thirds of the votes cast is a direct contradiction of what is stated in the covenant. So I think the, I think the rules of the vote do indeed have to be, be addressed. And those are really just my formal comments as a, as an aside and as an extemporaneous thing. What Ms. Berman did refer to, I will say, many years ago, when we looked at, when RELAC was in danger of going under completely, Colson Cluster sponsored an engineering study on how to replace the system. These, these houses are old and are not necessarily equipped for retrofit, and the expense that would be incurred, especially to those of us who are aging here, would be a very significant hardship, should the actual system go under. So I really appreciate your time for listening to me, I really appreciate your time for all that you do here, and for keeping Reston as tranquil and peaceful and as community as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that very much. Is there anybody else here wishing to comment on the air conditioning referendum? Last call. All right, thank you so much. Moving now away from the two public hearings, I'm going to open up this room to general member comments, and I do have several people still here on the list that I'll go through, and I'll go according to when you signed in. So I'll start with Mr. Bill Parker. Name and address, and, three minutes.
Actually, I'm here as a cluster president.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, five minutes. I see you're representing the cluster.
Thank you. My name is Bill Parker, and I live at 2130 South Bay Lane. I'm the President of the South Bay Cluster, and I've come before you twice already this year since June. I've presented you with timelines of events and evidence of repeated failures of the association to adequately inform the affected parties involved in the Cabot's Point Recreation Area. In the interest of the board's time, some of our members have consolidated their remarks and concerns for me to read to you. Their main points raised against the development of this court were as follows. One, there's considerable question as to the actual cost of the project. Requirements to prepare the site and maintain it over time seem to have widely varied estimates, well exceeding original estimates. Two, four of Reston's 2011 vision and planning principles are violated by this project. These relate to environmental sustainability, maintenance of residential character, sufficiently planned infrastructure, and variety of recreational opportunities. Three, the court may change the character of our quiet residential neighborhood, park and totlot. NPR, amongst other sources, reports that alcohol and the sport go literally hand in hand. Four, available parking is insufficient to accommodate parents at the totlot and bocce teams, with as many as eight additional cars parked on a short street that has a fire hydrant location, further reducing available spaces. Over flow down South Bay Lane is a violation of the fire code and will impede emergency vehicle access to residents' homes. The entire park is currently used for a wide variety of activities by residents of all ages. The court would displace them from this multipurpose space for the sake of a singular niche sport that is unlikely to involve children. Qualified sources, including the World Bocce League, say bocce can be played on any flat surface, including gravel, grass, and sand, so court construction is totally unnecessary. And I would ask you to consider the impressions and public perceptions of Reston that can be construed from the following. Reston Association planning procedures that should have been followed were not. South Bay and Cedar Cove Clusters were not notified about or involved in any aspect of this project until almost six months after the December board decision and three weeks after the design review application. In fact, we only found- In fact, we only found out about this at all by an RA staff quote-unquote clerical error after the DRB approval. RA's refusal to accept the appeal was improper and the revocation of affected party status for South Bay and other clusters was misleading and incorrect. Finally, when the park was laid out by the association's construction crews, they marked a space that was over six times the size of the original proposal that was approved by the DRB. That equates to almost half the park. Whatever was planned has not been revealed to us to this day. The feedback I've received from members of my own cluster, as well as others, has been overwhelmingly negative towards this proposal. I feel that our members were disappointed and outraged by the association's failures and dismissive actions and follow-ups. I was advised by one of our members that one of Robert Simon's goal is that, quote, "the importance and dignity of each individual be the focal point for all planning," end quote. Our members' opinions of the proposed court have been irrevocably soured by the events and issues surrounding. In closing, I want to thank you, Ken, for your well-thought-out agenda item tonight. It not only addresses the concerns of the members affected by all that I've already stated, but it provides a way forward through the staff recommendations. I would ask that the association's priority be focused on community outreach in the future so that situations like this may be avoided. I urge the board to approve both motions in item H. These would act to open the doors to community outreach surrounding projects like this. And I'm sure you would agree on this subject, that a little outreach might have gone a long way. And I thank you for your time and I thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ed Abbott. I live at 2218 Wake Robin Lane. I am also a lay member of the Design Review Board. I understand the DRB and the RA board have discussed the need for a comprehensive Reston lighting plan for many years. Now is the time for the RA board to move to approve the hiring of a lighting designer as a consultant to develop this plan. At the last full board meeting of the DRB, Director Thomas suggested that the DRB come before the RA and request that the RA board proceed with this process to develop this lighting plan. Before coming to this meeting, I spoke with our chairman, Joe Enrico, and suggested we comply with Director Thomas's suggestion. So here I am. The need is clear. The DRB struggled with the recent approval of the lighting for the Hunter's Woods pathways. Questions arose during the application which cannot be informed by current guidelines, such as how far should the lighting encroach on natural areas? What type of light fixture and strength of light is needed? How high and far apart should the poles be? Is the application consistent with the lighting along Reston's other paths? In reviewing the Hunter's Woods application, Richard Newland and I, Richard's a member of the DRB, longtime member of the DRB, walked part of the pathways near North Shore Drive. The intensity of the lights, the style of the lighting fixtures, the distance between poles varies and is different from what the DRB approved for Hunter's Woods. Looking to the future, the DRB just approved the conceptual design for the Lake Anne Development. LADP will apply for a lighting plan. In the absence of a lighting plan, the DRB will be faced to make, with the same dilemma and be forced to make ad hoc decisions. More importantly, our applicants need guidance. Without a plan, applicants are faced with an inefficient, uncertain, uncertain application process. This makes the DRBs and the applicants' job much more difficult. We, the RA board and the DRB, need to work together and quickly assure DRB's approval of lighting plans is applied in a consistent and comprehensive manner. This can only be done with a comprehensive lighting plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Chuck Casio, 2134 South Bay Lane. I've spoken before on the topic of bocce ball courts being constructed in a small, open park space at Cabots Point Park. I want to thank the board for its willingness to listen to me and the many others in the South Bay Cluster who are deeply concerned about the possibility of these courts being constructed. My point here tonight is to emphasize again that constructing the courts in this particular location goes against almost everything I and others have valued about Reston over the years. And I bought the first home of my life in Reston in 1971 and taught at South Lakes High School from the very first day it opened in 1978 until 1996. The property that would be compromised by the construction of these courts is a small, open area of land that lends itself to informal fund for kids and families because of its unstructured openness. It is an area that cannot accommodate additional traffic or parking. It is an area where many children who play informal games there should not have their free-form fund disrupted by formal activity that will draw traffic that cannot be managed to the area and people who focus on one activity rather than many. There are other areas in Reston that are much more suitable for bocce ball. My wife and I run the trails in Reston quite often and nowhere do we see a recreation area that abuts against residences as closely as these courts would. Nowhere do we see anything remotely resembling what is proposed here infringing on the property and informal recreational spaces that are part of what makes Reston so appealing. Nowhere do we see evidence that a board member has simply had something constructed because of his or her desires despite the fact that the construction obstructs traffic, infringes upon existing recreational activities, and potentially damages property values. It's not the way you operate. Instead, the parks that we see have been planned and constructed with great care to blend in with the surrounding community, to ensure that privacy for the residents is respected and to salvage the natural environment, not destroy it. In short, the bocce ball court construction in this particular location would be a willful rejection of Reston values, of residential integrity, and of free-form recreation. I urge you to vote against this ill-conceived and inappropriate project. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Valloy and I reside at 2140 South Bay Lane in Reston, in Reston in South Bay Cluster, one of the finger clusters directly linked to the Cabots Point Ball Field Play Meadow. Again, I want to thank Ken, Ellen, and Kate for responding to the concerns of not only South Bay Cluster members, but also of the many other families who have used the Cabots Point Ball Field Play Meadow and Totlot for many years for recreational purposes, playing a variety of sports, picnicking, pursuing other activities, and which is now proposed for the construction of bocce ball courts. I understand that during your visit to the meadow, those types of uses were clearly demonstrated with a number of good, with a good number of children there playing and using the field for those types of recreational purposes. I can assure you that was not staged for your benefit. Those of us who live in the Cabots Point, South Bay Cluster see that kind of usage so very frequently during much of the year. I'm sure that you realize failures of the notification process and that you might even concede those failures. The likely notification and response failures aside, my major point of contention is that it is inconceivable to me that RA's analysis of where to locate the bocce ball courts within Reston convinced the board that this small park that is used so much by so many for so many enjoyable purposes, where parking is limited and frequently, frequently used by bus riders, and where the location of the bocce ball courts would be within feet of members' homes was the appropriate and best sighting within RA's or the county's recreational areas for this purpose. I would hope that the selection of the Cabots Point Ball Field Play Meadow area was not driven by an individual or an individual cluster's personal preference, but by good RA analyses that characterize the Reston Association's usual site selection processes. Additionally, if bocce ball is considered to be sufficiently popular by its members to charge RA to expend its resources to build, it should be just as popular and accommodating wherever sited within Reston. We raise these concerns not from a "not in my backyard" attitude, but from a true concern that citing the bocce ball courts here is just wrong, was not well-founded, and would take away so much of a well-used recreation area from so many families that have enjoyed it for many years. Thank you for your, as always, excellent responsiveness and your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Norvell?
Wow, guys.
Address, please.
My name is Jill Norvell. I represent 25,000-plus members.
Address?
I'm sorry.
Address?
2123 Cabots Point Lane, Reston. I represent 25,000-plus members of the East Coast Bocce League. Not really. I don't represent anybody. I represent myself, Wanacera. I live at Cabots Point Cluster and I'm a nimby, yes, in my backyard. We're apparently here tonight to talk about due process, traffic, open space, and bocce. Have y'all seen a bocce court, really? Have you seen one? Let's start with bocce. It's a game people play for fun and relaxation. Adults do like to play. It's a simple game, really. Players or teams throw larger balls at a small ball and who's ever closest to that small ball wins a point. That's the process of bocce. Those are the rules of bocce. Now the rules seem to be changing and the ball that's farthest away from the point, from, from the small ball is being awarded a point. Or, in this case, it's a redo. Last year, Director Chu proposed that one bocce court, not these large 40-by-80-foot things that are being discussed, one bocce court be placed at the Cabots Point Recreation Area. He sought community input. He presented the proposal to the Cabots Point Board of Directors in November of 2013. I can't speak to what happened at South Bay, but I presume that he at least attempted to do the same with South Bay Cluster. That's the other property that joins this area. Residents were given notice and opportunity to express their views. I heard about it. I knew about it. I lived there. I expressed my views. RA saw the benefits of this improvement and Director Chu's proposal was accepted. Now RA board is backtracking in the wake of ex post facto outcry. Let's put this in perspective. It's a singular bocce court. It is not a brothel. It is not a multipurpose-lit athletic field. One bocce court. What about traffic? I have driven on Cabots Point Lane daily for 28 years. Despite totlot users, DC commuters, exercisers, high school overflow, et cetera, I have managed to navigate the area safely and without issue. Are you seriously concerned that this one bocce court will cause massive traffic issues? Living in this area, trust me, this, this is the least of your traffic woes. Again, it's one bocce court. It's not the Metro Silver Line. Finally, open space, not one iota, not one scintilla of open space will be lost to install this bocce court. Its footprint is less than the size of a neighborhood pool lap lane. No buildings or structures, just one bocce court against the far back edge of the field where the only people I have ever seen use the area are dog walkers doing their morning business. It is not anywhere near the totlot. It is not impeding on the totlot. It will not displace nor intrude upon playing tots, exercisers, or dog walkers. It's a bocce court. It is not Spectrum. It is not town center. I urge the board to implement the plan and install a bocce court at the Cabots Point Recreation Area. Don't be derailed by knee-jerk nimby-ism. Say yes in my backyard and bring bocce to Reston. Grazie.
Thank you.
I didn't know I needed 13 copies. Thank you.
All right, I have a few items here that were sent electronically. So if you'll allow me to read these as well.
Excuse me. I signed up to speak on, on Dwight.
You?
I spoke on the budget, but I also wanted to speak on this.
Okay. Please. Come on up.
Please. Thank you for allowing me to chime in there real quick.
Again, sorry to bother you again, just for the record.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. David Thomas, 2258 Cedar Cove Court and 43-year-old Restonian. One of the things, just so you guys know, which is a good thing, my kids right now, they're doing their homework, but they are watching online. So live, so. Hi, John and Julia. There's Uncle Jeff over there. But what I'm here to talk about is the, the bocce court. You know, I'm not against bocce. In terms, I've played it before, but the thing is with the location. You know, this is an area which my kids play on, whether it's capture the flag, whether it's baseball, whether it's soccer. It's the last, one of the last gems that Reston has. You've moved my prop. But that prop right there is kids lying on the grass. Again, I spoke to you before on this. This is one of the gems in which you're trying to take with the bocce court. Put it on there and maybe just one other thing, but it's taking away open space, flat open space that is very rare in Reston. You guys know this. And one of the things is that I want to continue to see from Reston is to take our open space and cherish it and to allow for us to have grass where we can just go out there and do it. It's more than just dog walkers and people out there exercising. It's, it's a whole community that goes on there. But there are other locations which can be used. So I urge the board, based on the two motions, and Ken, by the way, thank you in terms of presenting these two motions tonight. But motion two really stands out for this whole process that occurred here. And, and I do really respect this, but the move to direct staff to draft a new policy resolution that will prescribe a standard process for the association to use when considering new facilities at established recreation areas. And I do applaud you for that. But I also ask you to, with motion one, as you move to rescind the decision of December 12th, 2013 motion of the board authorizing the construction of a bocce court at the Cabots Point Recreation Area located at the corner of South Lakes Drive and Cabots Point Lane and direct staff to determine members' desires and possible alternate locations for bocce facilities. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John and Julia.
I have two or three electronically sent, but before I do that, is there anybody else that did not have an opportunity to sign up but would like to provide comments to the board this evening? Yes?
I submitted it online, yes.
But you can certainly speak?
Yes, you can certainly speak.
You want me to announce, sir? Thank you.
My name is Bob Wolf. I live at 11931 Triple Crown Road. At last month's board meeting, I asked when the board discussed the Pony Barn repurposing initiative, including an option being the Memorial Garden sponsored by IPAR. RA directed me to the board meeting of May 29th and its minutes. In reviewing those minutes, I did not find any discussion, nor did I, in reviewing the video of the 5/29 meeting, did I find any discussion. What I did find was that immediately after a two-hour executive session, President Kenevan made a motion to direct staff to prepare a plan to evaluate alternative uses of the Pony Barn, including a Memorial Garden. The video of that board meeting does not show any discussion of this initiative. It only shows at the 2:35 mark of the video. It only shows at the 2:35 mark of the video, a return to open session, the motion by President Kenevan, vote of approval by the Board, and then the Board moved on to other business. It certainly appears that the discussion occurred in executive session. Why is executive session necessary at such an early stage of an initiative like this? How can it be legal, personnel, or contractual matters that require executive session? In the spirit of transparency for the memberships, there has got to be a way for groups who want to approach the Board be heard and discussed in an appropriate way in an open session. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that did not—oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand. Come on up, sir. Again, your name?
Mitch Robinson, 2148 South Bay Lane. And the only thing I'd like to add to what we've heard is that I was past president for a couple of years prior to the start of Bill Parker's presidency. And no time, no time, during my presidency did we receive any notification of what was going on with the bocci court. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else before I read the electronic copies? All right. Starting with the first one. From—I'm reading the one that's a statement for the RA Board for today's date. Mr. Vic Moravitz. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm a 25-year resident of Reston. I spoke to you last month, and I write to you again to express my strong disagreement with Reston Association's persistent involvement in the Memorial Garden Initiative. I believe this to be a private and sacred issue and not part of the Reston Association Charter. If recall, last month, I stated that I expressed my concern for the health of Reston, pointed out that there are now Memorial Garden options for Restonians on the grounds of St. Anne's Episcopal and United Christian Parish. There may be others. I also proposed that the solution for the grieving families of Reston does not involve Reston Association. Moving forward, the solution is that more Memorial Gardens should be built in Reston on the grounds of our places of worship. Simply put, IPAR should help Cornerstones, not Reston Association, to solve this problem. I ask that the Reston Association Board pass a resolution expressing the fervent hope that our civic partners, Cornerstones and IPAR, will work together to increase the number of Memorial Gardens in the Reston-Hernan area on the grounds of our places of worship. In closing, I talked a bit about the importance of keeping the tight boundaries of our public institutions. I reiterated a history lesson from college about the difference between the modern and the not-so-modern world of Western civilization is the separation of state craft from soul craft. I stated that we have a duty as Americans to try to get democracy right. It's not easy, but keeping separation between things public and private is a big part of that. Again, now that you have listened to a repurpose statement, I urge you tonight to act to cease the Memorial Gardens Initiative and return to keeping the separation between state craft and soul craft. Common ground is not sacred ground. Thank you, Mr. Vic Moravitz. The next item is from Adam Bovensy. Hi, Reston Association. My name is Adam Bovensy. I live in the Walden Cluster across from Langston Hughes Middle School. I've been noticing some of the very vocal resistance to bocci by a few people. I don't think those who are opposed to bocci represent a very significant percentage of the Reston population. I'm very excited about the upcoming bocci courts. My family's excited about the courts. I think you've selected a great location for the courts. Normal Reston citizens don't have the time or energy to put into this issue that the few anti-bocci protesters have put. But I would hate to see this great idea derailed by a few irrational people. If there's anything I can do to support this plan or the Board member being targeted over this, please let me know. Adam Bovensy. And his phone number is provided. I think that's all of the documents that have been provided to me.
Mickey Moravitz.
Can I speak for a moment on the issue of the bocci court? First, I have a question. Yes?
You have two Moravitz.
Okay. This is basically a separate one. I guess it's this old one. You want me to read that again?
It's one from Mickey and one from Vic.
Oh, wait. This is from Mickey. I stand corrected. Hang on. All right. This one is from Mickey Moravitz. My name is Mickey Moravitz, and I live at 2413 Bugle Lane. I've been a Reston resident since 1984, a licensed residential realtor since 1987, mom of three who grew up on Reston Trails, paths, and playgrounds, and currently an active participant in the Pony Barn Working Group. Thank you very much for your time this evening. I would like to draw the Board's attention to two points. First, admittedly, I do not believe there's a need for another Memorial Garden in Reston to begin with, but more importantly, I strongly oppose the placement of such in any residential neighborhood. Common areas in Reston's neighborhoods have been and need to continue to be functional areas of enjoyment for all age groups and are beneficial features of those neighborhoods. As people consider various areas to live, the community features as a whole are taken into consideration as enhancements to the neighborhood. Repurposing a pleasurable play and gathering facility into a solemn and single-purpose space is like taking away a valuable feature from a home, like a garage. Doesn't make sense, and it's inappropriate. And it isn't appropriate. Second, as brought up in the Working Group, and I believe deserving of the entire Board's consideration, is that with the growth of business and high-density housing foreseen in Reston in the near future, park areas such as the Pony Barn and Butterfly Meadow are going to be in much greater demand for the community at large and need to be preserved for enjoyment. With appropriate improvements, enhancements, and management, the Pony Barn—which is the largest covered pavilion in Reston—can be a wonderful space for business, school, and community groups to use, as well as families and individuals to simply enjoy. I urge the Board to reject any proposal to repurpose the facility otherwise. Thank you very much for your time and attention. I think that's it for the documents sent electronically. Yes, sir? You want to—
Yes.
If you could state your name and address?
Mike Norvell, 2123 Cabot's Point Lane.
For general information, I was with the RA's advisory committees on lakes and environment for 15 years. I'm a member of the Reston Garden Club as for the last year. And I have a question about the—and I would hope that you would look into this. What are the demographics of our area where this bocci court would be placed? I know in Cabot's—I'm also a Board member of the Cabot's Point Cluster. I know in our cluster, we only have three minor children. The rest are all adults. And I wonder if you include and check out South Bay and the other area of Cedar Cove, how many children would actually there? To my knowledge, most of the kids who come to the Cabot's Point area tot playground arrive with their parents in cars. So I don't know that there's that much. But I do know there's a lot of seniors in our area who would take advantage of the bocci court. And the only area that we're talking about is one that where people walk their dogs. So it's a dogs or humans and seniors, actually, who would make available use of this area. Now, you can relocate it along South Lakes Drive. There's many things you can do. But as my wife earlier stated, it is not going to be as pictured out of some magazine. I know there is an article that appeared in one of the Reston newspapers that took up South Lakes Cause, or the person who wrote was initially against this proposal. But I think that area is available and should be used not only for children, but should be available to adults and seniors. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, I did sign up, but could I speak as—
Please. Yes? Name and address? And three minutes?
My name's David Prelowicz. I live at 2224 Cedar Cove Court. I spoke a month ago in regards to the bocci ball court. And I did some of my own cost estimates, and I think that the initial estimates were quite low relative to what the actual cost of the court's going to be for a public's work project. I think it could cost anywhere between $30,000 and $50,000, depending on the excavation. That soil is very, very hard clay. A proper bocci ball court would require drainage and considerable amount of effort to put that court in that particular area. It's not a flat. It is a slow grade or a minor grade, but it would be a considerable amount of effort to put that in there and then putting in safety features of such relative to making sure children and stuff like that wouldn't be injured by playing around in the bocci court area. My fear is that it will be poorly—if it is done, it will be—it won't be properly implemented, and it will remain unused, and it will become an eyesore for the community. And then the other option is that if it is successful, then they will have the other problems, which is traffic and possible drinking and all those things that might come with adult activities. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Yes, please. Name and address. Three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Ellen Goldman. I live at 2148 South Bay Lane. I spoke to you last month, and I delivered a 27-page document against the bocci courts. I'm not going to repeat it. I'd like to make three points after listening to these comments. First of all, not everyone who lives in South Bay Lane is a senior. I don't consider myself a senior. There are plenty of kids who live in houses in South Bay Lane. The park abuts South Bay Lane. It does not abut Cabot's Point Lane or Cedar Cove. It is our cluster that is the most impacted by this and the only cluster that was completely left out of any planning. No notification, no involvement, no nothing. To access our cluster, you have to drive along the park twice. That's not true of Cedar Cove, which doesn't even come anywhere near the park, and it's not true of Cabot's Point, where all you do is enter and go into Cabot's Point. So the park is actually misnamed. It probably should be called South Bay Park, not Cabot's Point Park. And I say that for those of you that don't know the area. Finally, in terms of this idea that a bocci court is in some isolated corner, there's no such thing as an isolated corner of a park that's about the size of this room. The other activities that go on in the park that are not done in the totlot were itemized in the documents we provided and include things like soccer games, softball, yoga classes, et cetera, for people of all ages. I urge you to support the motion that has been put on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for anybody else before we move on to the next item. Thank you. All right. I mean, hang on a second. Moving on to—well, first, I was remiss in providing comments for the Board members. I apologize. Happy to provide that. Why don't we start on this side? Thomas, do you have any comments or information for us this evening?
I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and sharing their views. I'm really struck by the passion that the bocci ball would swell up here in Reston. I do think that we—as we move forward with consideration of other items, we do need to keep in mind that Reston is a changing community and that we need to be sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our residents, and we're all going to have to be as neighbors. We're going to have to work with one another and compromise on things. That being said, as a Board and as a staff, we need to be sure that we have good processes in place to ensure that we're engaged in the community, making good thoughtful decisions about changes that we need to make to our common spaces.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out and sharing your thoughts and comments with us. It's really important that we engage with the community and hear from you. And as I've seen a common theme of open space in Reston being encroached upon and changes happening as development's coming in, I think that we need to address this as an overall larger plan with strategic, you know, processes, as Jeff mentioned. And also, we need to look at—like, you know, I was just looking—we have another cell tower proposed in the running Cedar Ball Field area, which is also in south Reston, my district. And we really need to look at, you know, how does this fit into our strategic plan for the long-term, overall picture of all of Reston? And how does it improve the property values of the members of the Reston Association who pay us to improve their property values and the quality of their life? How do these things that we are discussing tonight and in the future, how does that provide amenities to our members and, you know, again, increase and improve our lives? So that's all.
Thank you. Okay. Director Chu?
Good evening, all. Just only one point of information, and that is that the new red table at South Lakes Village Center is finally moving forward. Permits have been secured. Construction is underway, and by the end of the year, we should have a new restaurant in South Lakes.
Thank you, sir. John?
The restaurant. I have nothing.
All right.
It continues to be my honor and privilege to be here.
Thank you, sir.
No comments.
Okay. Ellen?
I'm happy to be here, and I certainly would also like to thank all the members for coming out tonight. We really, really appreciate your comments. And it's so wonderful to live in a community that you have this opportunity to express yourself. Couple things that have happened already. We had a wonderful multicultural festival at the end of September. Twenty-five individuals were sworn in as citizens of the United States of America from 22 different countries. And it's all—this is our fourth year of doing this, the 14th year of the multicultural festival. But it kind of makes you realize that, hey, we live in such a country that we're fortunate to be able to speak our mind and say what bothers us. I think that's so very, very important. Last Saturday, at the South Gate Community Center, we celebrated Latino with the Latino Festival, and that was a big success. I spoke to Ken earlier, but tomorrow, I'm going to be taping at Comcast. There's a show called African-American Legacy. I'll be talking about the multicultural festival, briefly talking about RA, and it's just a wonderful opportunity in our community to embrace all the different multicultural groups that live here. That's all.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate y'all coming out and sharing your views. I think that's really, really important. It helps us as we consider making decisions on behalf of the entire Reston community. Would also like to publicly thank the Friends of Reston for the scholarship that they provided to five young tennis players, eight to 18 years old, allows them to join other kids, represent the greater Reston area. So thank you to the Friends of Reston.
I also want to thank everybody for coming out. It is always good to hear from the community, even when it feels like we're in opposition or we are in opposition on topics. It's always good to just fight our way through it, you know? That's because that's really the only thing we can do. And so we do appreciate your coming out. I know that sometimes when you're sitting on that side, as I have frequently done, you are wondering what the heck we're doing, but we're trying really hard to do what we believe is going to be the best thing for everybody, and I hope that everyone maintains an appreciation of that.
The only thing—thank you, everybody. The only thing I would add is that there are some items of strategic importance to Reston that have been underway. Obviously, the one that is on tonight's agenda is the Reston Master Plan Phase Two. And there—if you're not aware, there are many open opportunities with the community for you to communicate your thoughts, your ideas, comments. for you to communicate your, your thoughts, your ideas, comments, as Reston and our stakeholders, Fairfax County, the state, developers, everybody, take an interest in Reston Phase Two going into the next several decades. So, I stress for the community to get out, understand what's happening in Phase Two. If there's anything you can listen to tonight, I would ask you to listen to the presentation we'll be having later on tonight's agenda on this matter. And I would also add that there's a wonderful workshop coming up here on the twenty-ninth, the Urban Design Guidelines Workshop. There will be a luncheon as well as a community work session in the evening. And welcome to see as many community members at the evening work session as possible. So, think about it, put it on your calendar. Kate, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, we're, we really look forward to community participation next, what is that, the Wednesday evening?
Yes.
For that, on the twenty-ninth, a lot of time and effort has been put into it by Larry Butler in getting the speaker here, especially in working with the developers. We are very committed internally to put the best processes in place. We're looking at all land use issues, whether it's development, redevelopment of residential properties or in common area properties. You have a commitment from the staff of Reston Association that we'll be working hard on that going forward.
Thank you, Kate. And as I said, it, it's obvious we're, we're improving our process. An organization like this is going to be continually improving. That's, that's, that's just a matter of hand. But I want to focus everybody's attention that the board and the community need to be looking at the bigger picture items here, as will be discussed this evening later. These are all important matters and not diminishing any of them, but I want everybody to understand that the board, the staff, and the stakeholders out there are looking at Reston and its future. And I ask all of you to start thinking in that direction and help us out. I appreciate it very much. So, with that, I'm going to go to the next item and pardon me while I hit my bookmark to identify. This is the item on eleventh, item G eleven six thirty-two Sourwood Lane Hunting Request.
Mr. President, if I may interject for one moment.
Please.
There are a couple of us in batteries.
Yeah.
Batteries? Oh, okay. So, our batteries have run low?
Yeah.
All right. Take a moment.
Okay.
Thank you for the heads up.
Claire, I like the beer.
I'm good. I went to Utah.
I know. We're based in San Antonio. I didn't do the shift.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Are we back online? Getting back to item G, the eleven six thirty-two Sourwood.
Did you have a graphic that you wanted up?
Yeah, she was, she's going to try to get that up.
Take your time. At your convenience, if you're waiting for the graphic, that's fine.
Okay. Oh, I'll go ahead. Sorry, I wasn't sure if you were going to read the motion first or want me to go.
I'll let you give a little background and I'll read the motion. That's fine.
Okay. Early in September, Reston Association staff received a request, a hunting application for one one six three two Sourwood Lane. This is a neighbor of the prior application that you heard from the three lot owners who were just really a lot separated. And it went to the Board Planning Committee on October sixth and they forwarded it to you all. And you have the information in your packet. I don't want to, for the sake of time, I'm not going to go through all of this, but I do want to point out that the neighbors on either side of Mr. Jones, the applicant, have both submitted, sent emails, said they agree and are okay with the hunt, in particular, the lot to the right, that's one one six three oh Sourwood. And you'll notice in the recommendation that the board would need to waive the condition of the distance to the closest occupied resident. And that resident is aware of that. It's about a hundred and thirty feet versus the hundred and fifty feet required in the resolution. The graphic that I think Sabrina is trying to pull up shows that. You also have it in your packet as well. Shows the distances to the neighboring houses as well as to Sourwood Lane. And so, that's the only part of the criteria that's not met. Claudia and I visited the site. It's similar to the other lots on Sourwood Lane, where the only understory vegetation is stilts grass and species of ferns that the deer don't eat. And very much like the prior application on Sourwood Lane, we are recommending the board approve this, pending, of course, the agreement that we've worked through with council and the insurance requirement that, that is put in place. And I'm, I can go into more detail if you'd like, but again, you have all the information in front of you and hopefully you peruse that and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, why don't I read the motion and we can continue while we go into this.
Sorry about that, Sabrina.
That's all right. Move to approve the deer hunting request by owner, owners of eleven six thirty-two Sourwood Lane, thereby granting permission to bow hunt through the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen urban archery season and subject to the conditions outlined in Resolution Twelve Hunting. Staff recommend, staff recommendations included in this item summary, including a waiver of the condition that the distance to an occupied dwelling reduce from a hundred and fifty feet to a hundred and thirty feet and subject to the execution of an agreement as approved by Reston Association's legal counsel. That includes all of these conditions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. And there is your graphic. Any, let me, anything you wanted to add now that your graphic is up there?
Now, you can see the RA Common Area goes to the north and the part on the west there. What we've shown and read there is upon our site visit would be the actual location where the hunter would be oriented and then obviously the, the hunt would take place towards the, the house or the backyard. The photographs in your package show that, the specific tree, the location and the, and the height of the, the hunter location as well and some other shots of the, of the backyard there. And these, it's fairly similar to the, to the prior lots, although to the back of this, it's about, it's about three hundred feet to the lot due to north and west. And as you can see, about two hundred and fifty-nine feet to Glade Drive. So, I just wanted to pull that up because I think that's an important picture for those of you who may not have seen that.
Okay. Why don't I go around the table. Dave, do you have any?
Jeff?
Jeff?
I'm not David.
I know. I got to. Where is he?
He's at home watching, I'm sure.
Okay. He's watching you at home on TV. My apologies, Jeff.
No, I don't have any comments. I, I do want to thank Larry and staff for the presentation that we had last month on the, on the deer, deer issues. That was very, very informative. I don't have any questions.
Okay. Listen to it.
Yeah, I want to thank you for that presentation at the last meeting. And I also, is it on the website? Because I was trying to share it with some of my neighbors. It'd be great to kind of get more of that type of information out to the general community.
It was, it was meant to be an attachment to the minutes.
Yeah.
Today, so it would be posted as soon as.
Oh.
As soon as tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, but it'd be great to kind of keep, you know, spreading that information.
Yes, that's, yeah, good educational material and we hope to continue that and add to it.
Yeah.
Okay. Richard?
No comments.
All right. John? Okay. Ellen?
No comment.
No comments, like, good report.
Yeah, good report, thank you. All right, then I'll ask the question. All those in favor of the motion as read, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Is anybody abstaining? All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Bring on to the next item. All right, here I'll begin with the motions. Seems to make the most sense.
You'll have more time?
Yeah. All right, I'm going to read one, do these individually. So, let's begin with motion one. Move to rescind the December twelfth, two thousand thirteen motion of the board authorizing the construction of a bocci court at the Cabot's Point Recreation Area located at the corner of South Lakes Drive and Cabot's Point Lane and direct staff to determine member desire and possible alternate locations for bocci facilities. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Can I make one technical?
Yes, you may.
I would, it should probably be moved to rescind the December twelfth, two thousand thirteen decision of the board. You had a motion and you passed the motion.
That's a good, good catch. I'm good with that as the, Michael, you're good with that?
Yeah.
All right. All right, well, so why don't we start on, yeah, Eve, why don't we go around the table?
You know, at the time that we made this decision, I, and, and I have to say, right now, I want to say that I conceptually support bocci. I just think it's a great recreational opportunity and we need more of them. We need more diverse kinds of fun things that people can do. I don't, I, I think that there's a lot of misinformation out in the community right now. You know, the, the proposed size of the court is exactly the size that a bocci ball court is supposed to be. The reason that it appeared so large was because, my understanding is that when it got staked out so that Miss Utility could come in to make sure that they didn't, you know, hit anything of consequence, that, that it, the staff staked it out, you know, about five times larger than was necessary just to err on the side of safety. And so, it, it's painful to me to see, to see all of the, the ranker on the topic because I think it's generally, I think it's just kind of a benign thing. I understand that people have concerns about it and I'm not diminishing those concerns at all. I, but clearly, our process broke down. That is, that, I think, is what clearly has, has failed us is, is the process of notification and, and that being the case, I don't see that we have a lot of choice. I'm not saying that that doesn't mean that there won't be bocci in that same location because if that is the best location for it, then I think that that is where it should be. It is painful to incorporate these changes into our, our, our neighborhoods. I can tell you, though, that we did survive paddle boarding down on Lake Anne. There was not, it just turned out to be a very pleasant and non-issue, even though evidently the thought of it on Audubon was more than anybody could bear. But we did have the same kind of, you know, we have been stumbling through this process or trying to improve the process. Let me put it that way. I don't want to make it sound like we're inventing it for the first time. We're not. But as we are facing more and more of these changes, we need to get better and more crisp at, at that process. And so, that's, that's all. I think that I am, I'm saddened to see the ranker. I don't believe that there was any, any ill intention behind this whatsoever, other than a director wanting to introduce a nice amenity to the, to that community. And, and I hope that in spite of the failures of the process, that we will get past the, the feelings of, of conspiracy and, and what. So, that's it. Sorry to ramble. You're welcome, Ellen.
Mike?
I echo some of.
Some of my rambling?
Thank you for rambling, Eve. I appreciate that. I, I too, you know, support the idea of, of bocci and other amenities in, in Reston. Anything that gets folks out of their homes, into the community and enjoying this beautiful community is something that I'd like to see more of. I think that we've learned a lot, you know? Any, everything needs to be improved. We need to have a good process, a process that our members have confidence in. Disturbs me about the conspiracy and so on and so forth that's talked about in terms of the decision-making. This process frankly is very open and transparent and, you know, through the governance reform we're talking about and otherwise, it'll become even clearer. We see problems when you all bring them to our attention. It's hard for me to believe that we're spending this amount of time on a relatively small investment in the community, but frankly, the, the effort to improve the process is absolutely essential because we've got bigger decisions in front of us.
Right.
And so, I'm engaged in working on this to improve it so that we can take on the really big decisions because as all you know, this community is growing very quickly. And either we take control of our destiny or somebody else will decide for us. And I frankly would like to see us come together as a group to develop the community, community that we, we want and love. So, thank you.
I, well, I, I don't want to ramble.
I did that for you.
But I don't think bocci would be a bad thing. I think it's a, looks like a sport that just that everyone could get out and really enjoy, maybe not necessarily at Cabot's Point. But the other issue, I think, I don't, well, I think there was a breakdown within our organization and we're certainly going to, we have certainly fallen on the sword and we did not notify or ensure that all of the affected parties were notified. So, we're going to try to do better. Yeah.
Kate, you want me to come back? John? Nothing. Richard, anything?
Let me try to be brief. First, the board did not fail with respect to its process. There was no failure. Period. End of statement. We filed, we did exactly what we were supposed to do. In fact, Director Siegel, myself, Director Keneven, and others exceeded the expectations of the process that was in place. The notion that this is a pet project of mine, I want to be perfectly clear. A district member brought this issue to the board as a recommendation for budget concern, consideration. I supported my member. I thought it was a good idea, as did the vice president of the board, as did the president of the board, and ultimately, as did most, if not all, of the board members. Thought that the concept of a bocci court was a low-cost, easy win. Personally, I still do. We are now being asked to unwind something that we did in good faith following process. When I was elected to this board, as every other board member, one of the first things that we are told is that we are here. that we are told is that we are here to take, make decisions and take actions that are in the best interest of the entire association. Not a cluster, not an individual, the entire association. In my history at Reston, the board has generally shown very little will, political will, to take actions against the vocal minority on a NIMBY issue. Very few exceptions. I hope that this isn't one of those. I hope that this board will exercise good judgment and political will to support its original decision. Having said that, it appears that not the RA Board, but the DRB process fell apart for reasons I have no idea. I wasn't a part of that. I made a presentation along with the other member to, and, to the DRB, and that was it. Now, if that process broke down, I would be the first person to say, we need to revisit that process. We need to revisit that decision. And that's what the motion should be tonight, to revisit the DRB processes, not the decision of the board. And let me not make, I mean, again, I want to make it perfectly clear. This is not an issue of process. I know a lot of people have said, oh, your processes were wrong, you didn't notify us and everything else. That's not the objective. If we had followed some super process, had notified everybody, had sent everybody certified letters, okay, numerous times, the objections that those people have to a bocce court would be exactly the same. No difference. We are simply looking at a group of people who don't want a bocce court in their backyard, including people who have said, we don't want it in our park. Well, I need to tell you, it is not South Bay's park. It is the Reston Association's park. That park belongs to every member in the Reston Association. The fact that 20,000 people haven't stood in a line to come in here and speak in favor of bocce does not mean that there isn't support for bocce. Or that there's support for bocce at, at the court. At, 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 at South Bay Park, at Cabot's Recreation Area. So, obviously, I'm not in favor of this motion, and I am asking my fellow directors not to support this motion. I would entertain a motion, in fact, I'll make the motion, to revisit the DRB decision, because I think that there are other reasons we need to revisit the DRB decision.
The motion is move to revisit the DRB?
No, there's a motion on the table, and I'm not making it.
Right. There's a current motion.
I'm choosing not to make a substantive motion.
No.
It's okay.
Cindy?
Okay. So, again, this kind of goes back to my earlier comments of us needing to look at the overall picture and the long-term plan, and again, look at our, our charter to conserve, protect, and enhance the value of our real property for our members. So, I, I just urge my fellow board members if we could have kind of a long-term, you know, kind of plan for that, and I think something like that's in effect, or, or, you know, starting to happen, I'd really think that that would help with this. And just also, our, our 2012 survey showed that the natural areas and open space is one of the most valued assets of the Reston Association for the members, and I, I think that we need to really recognize that, and, and stop proposing things to go on our open space. If you want a bocce court, put it in a parking lot. So, this, this decision was made before I was here, and I have not been able to figure out what the official process is for changing the open space uses. So, I'm gonna abstain, but I, I really think that we need to, you know, start looking at parking lots or other areas besides our, our open space and natural areas for these types of amenities.
I, yeah, Richard, I, I share some of your frustration with, you know, we have, we have big issues that we need to be, be looking at for our future, and we're spending a lot of time on, on issues that are smaller in scale. But I, I, I kind of take exception with the idea of, of, of process, because I think from our, our members' point of view, the, the board process that it follows, and the DRB process that it follows, I think to our members, we need to remember that, for them, it's all one thing. Something is gonna end up impacting their, their neighborhood, and their park, and our parks. And so I think we need to look at that, consider the processes holistically, and how our members perceive the processes. So, I, you know, like, listen to this, you know, these actions we're taking before, you know, before I was on the board, and it's been hard to kind of figure, figure everything out. But I, I think we, as a community, we need to get our minds around the idea that we need to be thinking about how our community is going to change over the next 10 years, and how are we gonna design our processes so that we can be effective and efficient in dealing with the small stuff, and have good, solid processes. We get the input we need, we're making good, intelligent, fact-based decisions, so that we can decide, gather the facts, make decisions, and move on, because we have, there's a lot that's gonna be on our plate in the next, in the next five years. And, and that's where we need to be focusing on. So, I, I love the idea of looking at our processes from a member's perspective, from the beginning to end, and how it impacts them and the community, and not being caught up in little segments of it. Need to look at it from how it's viewed from the, from the community and from our members. That's all.
Got a news alert. The, the only comment I would make, I think a lot of people have already expressed many things I, I would like to say, so I'll be brief. But first of all, I agree, this is, this is, should not be perceived as a director's pet project. It was not. This, I agree, was an item that came as a result of us working with the community in our last budget cycle, where we made it a point to say, we want people to see the budget process, see how the sausage is being made, and also to provide input to us in terms of suggested items that we should consider for capital projects, what have you. It was the opportunity for members to get involved. Richard took advantage of that from some members that came to him with an idea, and I think at that time, we all agreed, it made a lot of sense. It was a low-cost item, low impact, including the sport. It just seemed to make a lot of sense. The only thing I can think that, it's a shame that perhaps something broke down in the process itself, and I hate to keep abusing that term, because I'm actually very proud of the process that we have, but if there is a breakdown that took place, obviously, we've got to make right. But I am still a very big fan of putting bocce, not one, but many bocce courts across Reston, you know, if it makes sense. But we will be doing a recreational and amenity survey with the community here shortly, and so we'll make sure that we're doing what we think is in the best, what, what you would like to see. We will follow suit and, you know, take a survey to see what makes sense for our, our longer-term plans. Because I want to finish on that. I really hope I see the same people at the Reston Master Plan Phase Two meetings for the community, as I'm seeing on a 10-by-60-foot swath of land. It's, it's important, and so I want everybody to be thinking that we've got to, we will address all of these, but I really want us to be focused on these big issues that are facing us and looming over us, with Metro coming and everything else. We, you know, we have to speak as one voice as a board, and we have to make sure we're speaking as one voice as a community to our stakeholders out there, so that's, that's all I have to say. Kate, anything?
Yes.
All right. So, with that, I will take the vote on motion one. All those in favor of the motion as read and amended slightly by counsel, to change the word "motion" to "decision," please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by stating nay.
Nay.
Nay. Those abstaining?
Just me.
Me, as well.
Oh, two, okay.
Okay. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to move that the board direct the DRB to reconsider the application for bocce at the Cabot's Point Recreation Area.
What was the vote that was just taken? I didn't, I didn't get a solid vote.
Sir, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of that. Sorry, Richard.
I move to direct the Design Review Board to reconsider the Reston Association's application to construct a bocce court at the Cabot's Point Recreation Area.
Did the DRB turn it down?
No, it approved it.
And is there a second? Did I give a second on that?
I'm looking for a second.
I second.
Can we do that?
Yeah, I'm not sure you can.
No.
We could ask them rather than direct.
Let me ask you another question. Can the RA resubmit its application?
If you're gonna do anything, I think you would want, in that regard, you could resubmit for the proper, for following the proper purposes, if that was where you're going with it. So, yes, you could resubmit, because you want to make sure that the community is heard.
Could you speak up, please?
I'm sorry. You can ask for the, the submission, the application, to be resubmitted, but you can't direct the DRB to reconsider.
Okay, then I will reword, if I may, I'd like to reword the motion to rescind, I'll rescind the motion I just made, withdraw, I will withdraw it, and make a substitute motion, and that is that we direct the staff to resubmit its application for a bocce court at South Bay Recreation Area to include consideration of the accessibility issues.
He's saying to include the issues of accessibility, which were not considered the first time, and so that would be a good way to do it. Then everybody can be heard, that's good.
Again, if you could speak up.
If you could speak up, please tell us what was the result of the vote.
Sir, please.
Please, nothing. I've been sitting here for three hours. I want to hear, I want to hear what the result was.
Listen. Folks. Listen to them. Director, please come back to the table.
Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that, because it wasn't clear to anybody here what happened.
All right. Well, explain the vote.
Okay.
Excuse me, we have a motion pending.
Oh, yes.
Explain the vote first. How can you have a motion pending, pending if the vote hasn't been explained?
I have a motion on the table. Let us get through this matter, please. All right. The motion is, would the motion be reread for everybody?
Should I read it?
Yes.
Okay. Richard Chu, excuse me, Director Chu, seconded by Director Thomas, excuse me, Thompson, moves that the board direct staff, I was reading the first one, to resubmit Reston Association's application for a bocce court at Cabot's Point Recreation Area to include consideration of accessibility issues. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And Director Thompson has seconded that, so any comments?
Yeah, can we have comments?
Mr. Thomas, Director Thomas?
I, I think it's a, it's obviously a good idea to reconsider it. I just wonder if reconsidering it before we've changed processes, how we're gonna how we would move forward, and with a better...
Jeff, the DRB does have a process. That process broke down.
Okay.
In addition, in addition, so that's what we're trying to fix.
Gotcha.
Okay. Those who oppose the concept of a bocce court in that particular location will be able to address the DRB, the DRB will be able to make a decision. In addition, the, the, the application will be able to...
Let's, let's, I, I, let's just...
I, I appreciate the explanation, but that, that's all I have.
Okay.
If, if we re, if the DRB reconsiders the accessibility of the court, wouldn't that change the cost considerably for the budget, and then the board would have approved something that we didn't, that, like, I don't understand, would that come back to the board, because we have to reapprove the budget?
Right, exactly.
Is that, okay.
John? John?
Absolutely silent.
Okay.
Nothing, thank you.
I've got nothing for this one.
Well, it seems like a, a, a good step, because it will go to the DRB, the community can be heard, the DRB can make a decision, and then if there's a budget impact, we will have to deal with it.
And I'll take the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by stating aye.
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 Please, raise your hands for me.
Please raise the hands.
I count four.
Make sure you indicate that as I'm...
All those opposed? Raise your hand. Anybody abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
All right.
To the gentleman.
Yeah. Let's have a... Would you like to restate the vote, sir?
The question was why the first motion failed, and it's because it lacked the majority of the board present in voting on the issue. So, it failed for lack of a majority.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see who voted for and who voted against it. You couldn't tell because it was sort of...
That'll be reflected in the minutes.
And, and, and I, our, Sabrina is not sure who all voted on that, because I'm missing a vote as well. I can say what I have.
On the first, are we talking about the very first one?
On the first one.
Okay.
On the first one, I, go ahead, Sabrina, I'll just...
And please correct me if it's missing, if there, if I have anyone saying a vote the wrong way. Okay. For the first motion, as included in the meeting materials, I have voting in favor, Secretary Sanio, Vice President Graves, Director Thompson, and President Keneven. Is that correct?
No, it's not.
No? Okay. I think President Keneven was maybe the one.
Was nay.
That was a nay.
It was a nay.
Got it.
Richard Chu and Ken Keneven were nay.
Got it, and then?
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions.
And then the two abstentions. Okay, so that's the one, that's what I got wrong. So, three were in favor, two were against, and two abstained, so it lacked a majority. Thank you for clarifying that for me. It needed to be done. Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Yes. Motion number two. Move to direct staff to draft a new policy resolution that will prescribe a standard process for the association to use when considering new facilities at established recreation areas. Do I hear a second?
Take that with that one.
All right. Why don't I start with Eve? Any comments?
Well, it seems that we have established, or we have been working on a process, maybe it's not been codified yet, and, okay.
No, not, not for, not for common areas.
Not for common areas.
Not for common areas, okay. This is for development, redevelopment of, of larger residential projects.
Gotcha. Okay, then I would say this is a good thing to do.
Mike?
I agree.
I agree, good thing to do. We need a, we need a, a clear, predictable process.
Ellen?
I agree.
Okay. I agree. John?
I'm not certain this requires, this rises to the level of strategy where the board needs to vote to direct kind of a simple procedural thing. But if that's what you choose to do, it's not harmful, it just strikes me as a bit unnecessary. Unless you want to re, you know, reconsider the vote on the bird. Probably, probably not.
I just want to point a clarification, and this is for established recreation areas only. This is not for any other rest in common area. That's, I'm re, I'm just looking at the motion.
It's a good question, I, I, okay, well, Eve, what do you think?
What would fall under the definition of recreation?
All right, let's finish then with, I'll give you a break on that, and come back to you on next comment, but is that the only thing you have, Richard? And I'm gonna go to Lucinda for her comment.
Oh, it's not the only thing I have, it's, I'll hold the rest of my powder.
Lucinda?
Yeah.
That's a very good point, Richard. Yeah, I just want to stress that as we look at this process, I'd like to see more members of the association notified when we are planning to do these types of things. I, I know there's a cost to mailing certified letters, and we don't want to add any additional costs, but there, maybe there's some other ways to kind of get the word out so that more members are involved and knowledgeable about the changes that we're planning on making.
I, I, I think it's a great, great idea. Increase in transparency and opportunities for engagement from the community so we can be making. And the members can be looking at proposed changes on a fact-based basis as opposed to rumor and lack of information. Lack of information always ends up creating disinformation. So fact-based decisions are what we want to be having.
Okay. Back to the, there, there was a good question, do we want this motion to stick to established recreation areas or not? It's a valid question.
Are we going back around?
Yeah.
I would say yes, because I think common area is a whole nother ball of wax. And I, you know, that's, I mean, oh, we're talking about, these are the consideration for the change in use. I mean, Lucinda, you made the comment, we shouldn't change, you know, but, you know, bocce on a grass court is really the same as bocce on a lawn, you know, I mean, it's still lawn, I mean, it's like, a lot of people pay, play bocce with chalk, you know, they just, I mean, people could be doing it right now without any, you know, so, so yes, I would, I think this is fine the way it is.
Okay.
Can we make a distinction between recreation areas and common areas? Is it clear?
That's what we are, that's exactly what I'm saying.
But is it clear to, to staff as to what, what they would be? How do you separate a, a recreation area from a common area?
Versus, I'm hiking through a, you know.
Well, aren't our recreational areas currently defined?
Yes. Or defined on a map.
Right.
If I were to ask you where the recreational areas are, could you clearly show me those?
Right, but we're.
And then separate, can you show me where the common areas? Are they one and the same, or are they different things?
Well, are there natural areas as well?
Yes.
Isn't it?
Correct term, and that's what we should use.
You done? Ellen?
I guess that would be.
The word planning committee scheduled tickler file to come back.
Okay.
Larry and I will come back, and Anna will come back with a, with a status report on, on the development of that. So it'd be something that I personally would like to see happen by the end of 2014.
Okay, good. That's my only.
Could we include that in the motion, would that be appropriate?
You can do whatever you want. You're the board.
Yep, folks, folks, folks. Alan, anything else?
That's it, yeah.
I would say yes.
John? John?
Okay. Now I'm just thinking, my nose is cold, okay.
Richard?
Yes, I would like to suggest a friendly amendment to change the word new facilities to delete new facilities and considering modifications to establish common, to common areas.
Modifications?
What's a change?
Could be, that could be anything. Could be a change of a trash can.
Why don't you, you, considering changes to the common area?
Withdraw the motion, let's see what staff brings back next time, and then just accept it for heaven's sakes.
Well, I just, I want to make sure we don't, like, fall down the path of unintended consequences, you know, it's like.
What was your Richard, would you please reiterate again?
My concern is that by using, that the commonly accepted interpretation of facilities is something that you are going to build or construct. Whereas if you had decided that you were go, we had a common area that we were, subject to DRB approval, of course, but that you were going to remove a stand of trees and put in a lawn, that's a modification to a common area that might meet with some resistance. So, I mean, I think this concept is good, but I'm kind of inclu, I'm leaning toward what Director, I mean, what Treasury Higginson just said in terms of, why don't we just trust staff to come back to us with a proposal rather than trying to wordsmith it here tonight?
Yeah. Makes sense, yeah.
That captures that idea that nature's good.
So what is?
I, I don't, I don't think we need a motion for that. I think staff is already working on it.
I would prefer it to be directed by the board. I think that it is important for the board to make this motion, asking us to develop a policy that it will be responsible for adopting.
Okay.
An implementation.
Let's, go ahead, Ken.
The suggestion, you could say, to use when considering additions, alterations, or improvements to the common area.
I like that better.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Uncomfortable.
Is the person who seconded it okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Can we state how it would read now the whole way through?
Move to, if you don't mind?
Please.
Is that, is that okay?
Yes.
Move to direct staff to draft a new policy resolution that will prescribe a standard process for the association to use when considering additions, alterations, and improvements to the common area. And or or? And.
So that, that would include a change in use or purpose of the common area, right?
As defined in the deed, and Ken is taking that directly from the deed, so we have to follow that, that links it to requirements.
Okay.
Anything else, Lucinda?
No comment.
Okay. 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 I'll ask the question, all those in favor of the motion as amended, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is anybody opposed? Is anybody abstaining? So passed unanimously, all right? Thank you. All right. Moving on to item I.
Mr. President, would this be a convenient time for a short break?
I'm willing to give us a very short break, it's five minutes for quick biology checkup. But I ask according to that clock if we could be back.
I don't know, it's a high school, show flyer kind of thing. It's not, it's too, too silly. And this is not what you have. A lot of social problems, so if you're seeing a good stage. He sang, um. I assume that's the days.
Why wouldn't you?
Well, I don't know, I, I.
It was today. I think I might go there.
If I go.
It is, it's already been.
It is time, it's time to come back. Danielle, help me. That's what it is, where an hour and a half behind.
It's a good place you make it.
Didn't you say it had to catch?
I should be able to, to free to. Depends on bandwidth.
I know, that's what, that's what finally happened, but if someone makes a motion and then it's seconded, and then it's overturned, that, that came back, which can be made, what happens? Like, what do I say happened to that? It was amended, okay.
But it stops in the.
His, his word was, I'm gonna make a substitute action.
But it was already, he would have had to.
So.
I think the pass has amended. No, and then, um, but I think it's like half a U.
Pili.
Small, but, but.
No, no, pili.
But, um, it takes.
Pure pili.
It might end, it takes, uh, uh, you know.
It's, we have, we.
I don't.
It's pretty impressive.
We get a bunch of.
And so you know, in the middle of the summer, it's our.
Yeah, a mom has. At the wooden house, she just went to town, decided it's a wooden house. But it's not, it's a town, her and all her cousins. She, she has a little gang thing.
Hi.
Microphones?
Madam CEO.
Let's go.
Well, I have some right here.
Everybody have their mics turned back on, please? Recharged? All right, we're on to item I. The Verizon proposed cell tower site. Larry, you want to kick this off?
Sure, because I think this is a lot easier than bocce. I, I had, I, I'm sorry, I had to.
I'll, I'll take you up on that.
So, about three or four weeks ago, Reston Association staff was approached by a representative from Smart Link LLC, a company out of Hanover, Maryland that is doing work on behalf of Verizon Wireless. And they just made a simple inquiry as to whether or not a cell tower in a general location, based upon some research and analysis that they had done, might be appropriate in Reston. I gave them a little bit of backdrop, a little bit of the history of our work over the last couple of years, working with Milestone Communications, who this group is very familiar with. And I said, we'll get it in front of our Board of Directors. And so what I want to do, since we're running a little bit late, is I'm gonna ask Lauren Bettis from Smart Link to come up here, and she's gonna walk through the slides for you. And then you have a couple of notions before you for, for you to consider, or you can ask questions of, of me or them, and we'll kind of go from there.
Okay.
So, all right. Ready?
Good evening, everyone. No, it's late, so I will try to be as efficient as possible with my presentation. My name is Lauren Bettis, I'm here with my team from Smart Link LLC. We are here, obviously, on behalf of Verizon Wireless to propose a stealth telecommunications facility on a property owned by Reston Association. Particularly the cluster of properties that make up the ball field located near Running Cedar Road and, and Foxcroft Way. Sorry, this is pretty easy. Just wanted to outline goals that I hope to establish here tonight. Really would like to just provide some background on not only our role as Smart Link, but also the site development process generally. I, I do that not to waste your time, but to provide some insight on the process because I think it's a good basis for kind of explaining where we are, where Verizon is. We're at the very beginning, we're not here to offer a do or die situation, we're here to work with you and Verizon, we serve as the liaison to come up with a site development that works for, for everyone involved. Also, obviously, to introduce a specific proposal, it's an initial proposal based on feedback we've received from Mr. Butler, as well as some feedback we, we saw from your website in response to a milestone, milestone proposal. And we'd also like to, really, underlying theme through this whole presentation is to establish Verizon's willingness to work with you guys. This is your property. Verizon doesn't make a habit of coming into, you know, landowners' properties and telling them this is how it is. We, you know, as, as a representative of Verizon, work towards coming up with something, again, that, that is agreeable to all parties involved and hope for a win-win situation. Verizon reaches its service goals and in exchange, property owners get paid for land that otherwise would not generate any income. So with that being said, just a little bit about Smart Link, we are contractor of Verizon Wireless. As I said, we oversee the site development process from site acquisition, very beginning stages, which is where we are now, through construction complete. We serve as a liaison between property owners, landlords, as we call them, and Verizon. The goal being to work a deal, again, that is acceptable to everyone involved. A little bit, and, and as part of that, we take the burden in terms of negotiating on your behalf and working with Verizon to come up with, again, a solution to, to their coverage needs. In terms of the, the process, again, it just provides some insight of where we are and, and what goes on in Verizon's world and how they come up with these site locations. Verizon has radio frequency engineers. They basically evaluate current coverage and capacity statistics as well as future coverage and capacity statistics or anticip, anticipated statistics, both for their cellular and data usage. They then take this data and compare it to current or future trends to identify areas of concerns that may threaten their ability to provide a good service to their customer. For instance, everyone here has a cellphone. You at least have one, you have a personal or a work, you have a laptop, you have an iPad. That increase in data usage, cellular usage, has increased exponentially over the past decade. And, and in order to keep up with those trends and to continue to provide you with seamless service, Verizon has to evaluate where their next tower will make the greatest positive impact on their service. So with that, RF determines where these spots are, these target areas, if you will, and then they issue a ring. It's literally a red circle on a Google Earth map, and they provide it to us, and they say, hey, go out. and they provide it to us, and they say, hey, go out and investigate the properties in this area, uh, evaluate their characteristics, uh, research, uh, land use zoning, permitting, all of, just a snapshot of this circle, and come back to me with a few candidates that you think are, are, will accept, uh, our proposal. So that's, that's what we did in this case. We were issued a ring that included your property. Um, we are now here, obviously, to, uh, hopefully obtain your approval, not of the specific, uh, design that we are initially proposing, but to gain your, uh, support in working with us and be open to the idea of using this property as a macro site for Verizon's, uh, telecommunication facility. Um, specifically, macro site was identified for your, your community, particularly this, uh, section of, of, uh, of parcels near the ball field. Um, I'm not an RF engineer. I don't pretend to be, so I can't speak to their level of technicality, uh, on this issue. And even if I could, it's nine going on ten o'clock, and I'd like you to be awake for the rest of my presentation. Um, so in order to kind of, uh, to show you, this photo kind of expresses better than I can, um, the need for, uh, a, a cell in this area or site in this area. So what we have here is you have one, two, three, four yellow, uh, areas. Those are, uh, current Verizon towers that are on air. They're up and running. Uh, they're existing. Then the red ring is, as I told you, is a search ring, um, which includes the Reston Association property. Uh, you can see clearly there that nothing is there currently. That's where RF has identified a need, um, and that's what we're here to, to hopefully work on. Again, as the, as development occurs in the Reston area, usage increases. Not only do, does the coverage, uh, capabilities of each tower decrease, but also the, uh, the capacity will decrease for each tower. So this proposal is to help with those particular issues. Uh, now some details of the, the specific proposal. Um, what we are proposing, again, is just a very initial thought. Um, we tried to consider your initial feedback, existing property use as a recreational ball field for the community, um, the fact that this is a residential neighborhood, as well as the existing environmental conditions. Um, there we go. And what I've done here is I've taken the, uh, the, your four parcels that compile this, this section of land, um, outlined the approximate boundaries. This is a, a reference point. And what I'd like to do is, uh, basically overlay two aspects of the design. Uh, the equipment space, reasons why we placed it where we did, um, and, and then also, uh, access. Okay. So when we were sat down and, and thought about, you know, putting our best foot forward to you guys, showing that Verizon's willing to think outside of the box, um, and, and kind of cutting through some of the proposals that you've had prior to, to tonight, uh, two concerns that we wanted to really focus on was the fact that this was a residential area. We appreciate and respect that it's a residential area. Um, and also avoid clearing a densely wooded area. Uh, in terms of the residential aspect of our, of our design, uh, instead of coming in and proposing a standard monopole or tower that typically is taller than a hundred feet and has, you know, three, four carriers on it, um, what we are proposing instead is a shorter hundred-foot tower, um, which really isn't a tower. It's a stealth, uh, flagpole. Um, so unless you really know what you're looking for, um, you know, that's, that's what we're going for. And I have examples of that to, to show you later on. Um, that blends in, obviously, with the recre- excuse me, recreational use, as well as the neighborhood, uh, residential use. In addition, we positioned the ground lease, or excuse me, the ground space, uh, along the third base line. Uh, we are proposing a one-carrier structure versus three or four, um, which, again, limits the ground lease space to one carrier. So instead of having, for, for Verizon's case, they would utilize two hundred and forty square feet rather than over eight hundred square feet that typically accompanies, uh, standard tower or monopole. Um, in addition, we also wanted to utilize a portion of the existing clearing. Um, with this corner, you utilize, uh, a space that's already been cleared, and you also have a natural, uh, border, at least along two sides there. In addition to the natural border, Verizon, um, obviously puts up a fence to protect its equipment, but it also accompanies that with a landscape plan that we would work with Reston Association to develop, um, and be acceptable to, to everyone involved. Now, while this is, uh, while this is the initial proposal, again, I wanna stress that, you know, if our priorities are not the same as yours, our anticipated, uh, you know, concerns from the board are not the same, and you have different priorities, or if you have alternate suggestions, we're open, Verizon is open to working with you and hearing those suggestions. Okay. Uh, this is an example of a stealth flagpole. The antennas are located inside, uh, the canister at the very top. Um, and on the, oh, excuse me, I'm back up. On the left, the equipment, uh, because of its proximity to the building, would be located in the interior of the building. Uh, on the right, what you have, I just wanted to provide a cross-section. You can kind of, um, get a feel for what could be proposed and, and alternatives, not only on the aesthetic side, but also the technical side. Yes, ma'am?
How tall is that one in the picture?
Um, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm not sure how tall that one is.
It's about eighty feet.
Um. She's a Smart Linker. Um, so on the right side, if you were to chop off the top of the pole, um, and look straight down, what you have is, in the center, is the structural component, which ensures that it's a structurally sound, uh, uh, you know, pole. Um, the blue rectangles are the antennas, and the outer, uh, thin ring is the canister or the enclosure of what you would actually see. So on the top, you could see that the carrier would have three antennas formed in a triangle, which obviously would create a larger diameter in the pole. Um, there are alternatives to that. You can use smaller antennas, as shown on the bottom, as well as a different configuration. So you're the, you know, you're, you're stacking them, uh, two by two, rather than forming that, that wider triangle there.
Does it only come in white?
Uh, no, it, it can.
Any color you want.
Okay, yes.
Why don't we ask, we'll come to questions.
Sure. Um, here we go. Uh, this is a photo sim, uh, of a ballpark. This is out in Illinois. Um, I requested photos from Verizon. Unfortunately, couldn't get them in time for, uh, this particular meeting, but it's something I obviously can propose to you or provide to you at a later date. Uh, but this was, I thought was a good representation of how it, you know, fits in naturally with, uh, with the recreational scene. Uh, at the bottom there, there, they have used a more, uh, hardscape, uh, uh, screening or monumental type, uh, screening for their equipment. Um, but again, you can, Verizon will work with you to do a natural landscape, uh, if you prefer. Um, this is a very minimal landscape, uh, or excuse me, landscaping plan that was accepted by this particular landlord. Um, but again, very minimal. Verizon will work with you to, to hide it a little bit better. And so here is, um, our proposed, uh, construction access path. Um, what we did is utilize an existing clearing from, uh, from Running, I'm sorry.
Running Cedar?
Yes, Running Cedar Road. I apologize. Running Cedar Road. Um, and what we did was trace the outline of the existing clearing. Uh, typically require eight to ten feet for the construction equipment to come in. Um, what we would propose is temporary, uh, construction, uh, construction pavers so that we could minimize the damage to, if any, uh, to the site. Uh, those would, obviously, would be removed, um, after construction was complete. We would propose construction during the off-season as to not interrupt any of the recreational use by the community and also work into the, to the lease agreement that, um, that the property be restored to its original condition uh, upon completion of the construction. Again, this route also avoids, uh, additional clearing.
What would be a typical construction period? How, how long from start to finish?
Uh, it depends on, on sites, and if I would like to defer, I believe it's a few months.
Six to eight weeks for a prom, typically.
Okay, and, and generally, in a nutshell, I know it's very ge- a general proposal, uh, but it is our initial proposal. We, I wanna express to you Verizon's willingness to, to work with you guys, um, should you be open to the idea of, of having a, a cell site on this property. Um, at the end of the day, I do believe that it's a win-win scenario. Uh, we can provide a stealth structure that fits in with, with your community plan. It also assists with the development of Reston that will likely occur in your long-term plan. Um, and, and at the end of the day, you guys do make a profit. You make money. Land, uh, Verizon pays a monthly rent to utilize your space, um, that otherwise, again, would not typically generate any income. Um, so I, I hope that this was, was helpful and, and hope that you guys can, are open to the idea. And take any questions?
Let's start out here. Yeah, anything?
Uh, I, I can speak directly to the level of service I get from Verizon. I just live right across the street.
Okay.
And I get one bar.
Okay. So. It's for you. And it's not only current, it's future as well.
Yeah, right. I understand. Um. I don't think I have any, any questions.
Can you go back to the other picture of the flagpole? I wanted to know how tall that one is.
Again, I, I couldn't, I don't wanna provide you with any wrong information, but I can give.
I'm gonna guess and say that one's actually close to a hundred, just judging by, um, the, the width of it and the height of the trees there.
And, and.
We can confirm with the, because we have the original design.
Yeah.
And we can get back to you guys on that.
And we could put flags on our poles?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Um. Are there other sites available to meet the service needs that are not on Reston Association land?
Um, well, we did look at that, and let me just switch back. So this ring was, is a really tough ring, because outside of your properties, uh, it's really just private residences. Um, so, you know, you guys were at the top of our, top of our list.
That, that's all.
Okay. Richard?
So Larry?
Yes.
On the, there's a strip of land that runs down off of the, I mean, first to second, about, parallel to the strip between first and second. That, is that RA land?
You're saying first and second.
Turn around a little bit.
Yeah, I mean.
This, is this RA?
Yes, we, yeah.
So it's, this is RA, and this is RA, and that is RA? So it's, it's those three parcels?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, because, yeah, 'cause our ball field is wholly on RA property, in addition to the, the surrounding natural areas there.
I believe there's an additional, uh, parcel, four parcels, uh, that borders that strip up by the, by the road, by the street side.
Okay, second question. Do we have any reason to believe that the DRB would approve this monopole?
I have no reason to believe that they would. But I also, uh, be quite frank with you, they're, they're not interested in fake poles and things like that. And I know that in our previous dealings, they certainly didn't submit a flagpole. And you, you were part of some of those discussions, but.
Okay, then the final question is, given the motion that just passed, how would you propose to fit this in to the new process to be developed?
We'd notify the world.
You don't have self-care.
We'll do it by mail. Is that it, Richard?
That's it.
Okay, John, anything?
No, I got my one question early.
Okay.
You've got the construction avenues back there. What about maintenance of the pole?
Uh, maintenance, that's a, that's a negotiation point in the lease. Um, it.
So where would it, where would the maintenance road to get in there be? If you're taking up everything and restoring the property to its original condition?
Well, I believe it, it could be as simple as requiring the tech park his truck in your parking lot and do foot traffic to the pole.
So that's all you would need? You wouldn't need to get equipment back there again to maintain anything?
Not for routine maintenance. Um, again, there may be, you know, special circumstances, which, again, would, could be addressed in the lease, and it could be the same conditions for the initial construction.
Put it another way, there wouldn't be a requirement for an easement with that.
There will be a requirement for utility easement, again.
To grant the easement so that Verizon could always.
Right, and, and they would have to get power to it as well.
Right.
Um. I'll go to you. I, I, I'm still formulating my question. Ellen, you ready?
Uh, is it Denise? Lauren. Uh, Florence, I'm sorry. You mentioned monthly, uh, revenue. How do you determine that, and how much are we talking? How much, how much dollars are we talking?
Getting cut to the chase. Um.
Rubbing information.
For, for something like this, an average approximate range would be, uh, eleven hundred to fourteen hundred dollars a month.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Um, yeah, general question, and I don't know if it's directed to you, maybe to Larry and to Kate. Why is this thing brought to the board now? What's the urgency?
Uh, the request was made, and before we spend any staff time on it at all, I want the board to direct whether it wants to take it up or not.
All I got.
You?
I have to say, we have a, um, as you know, as I'm sure Larry told you, the success rate for this thing is, uh, less than zero. Um, and so I would say that, I mean, is, it, have you ever seen a case in which your organization invested in actual design work? You know, like landscape architecture kind of design work with, you know, really high, I mean, because the, the entry cost in Reston is very high-quality design. It's not flagpoles on monuments. It's totally not, you know, these guys, it's like a non-starter.
I can, if, if, Lauren, if you don't mind, I'll take that.
This is Nicole.
So did you bring, did you bring your very best examples, do you think?
So just to understand kind of what we're seeking here today, it's really just.
But did you bring your best examples?
Absolutely not. Um, if I can, if I can take you back on that, and hopefully that's not taken the wrong way, it's, it's, um. When we're in a preliminary phase like this, and we don't have interest from a ground landlord, we don't have the ability to go out and get the architectural engineers and get the landscape designers, et cetera, to, to perform that action. So our goal here today is to see if you're interested, and then we can go make that happen and, and put that in front of you.
You probably would generate more interest by bringing to us your very, very best work to say, in this community, we did this beautiful stone retaining wall, and we did this, and da, 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 da. That, I mean, you really, that would, that would be way more effective. Place to start, from my perspective, because our design review board is, they do not mess around.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. I thought you meant as far as, for this particular location, not example of existing sites.
I'm saying, just by way of, of enticing us into, you know, entering into this fray, which it is a fray, because our DRB does not like cellphone towers, and nor do most of our residents. They like this coverage. They just don't like the towers. And so I, they, um, you know, they have to, we, it's a lot of staff time and energy to get these things worked on. And so I would have to know that there was some potential, you know, by seeing something really beautiful, and that would say, yeah, I'd be willing to put, to put that energy into it, because I think that our design review board might approve it.
And you're asking for examples?
I am asking for examples. Things, your previous work, your very best work, like, wow, we really like, we killed it. That's what I would want to see.
Um, we can send you some more examples. I will say that this particular site is really kind of a new venture for us. And the reason I say that is, we've got the history of what's gone on with the Reston Association as far as towers. So typically, most. So typically, most of these carriers aren't going to say, we'll landscape it how you want us to. We'll, you know, decrease our design for what we're going to put in this flag pole to make the diameter as small as possible. So because we kind of have the history of what's happened here, they're willing to make these concessions. So I would have to go outside this particular market to find something that's landscaped as extensively as what we're proposing to do to accommodate it and that sort of thing, and we'd be more than willing to do that.
This might be an old-school question. What are the health concerns of locating a tower so close to residence?
Because of the height of the tower and the height of the antennas, there's more health concerns for all the cell phones that are in this room right now, which is actually zip, than what you're going to get from that actual pole. And we can provide you the data on that as well.
And how much work is required to get the electricity there? How are you going to be doing that?
Again, that's kind of a preliminary question. Typically, there will be trenching involved, and again, we'd have to restore the property to, you know, exactly how we found it. But we would have to do a walk with the local power company and telco as well to determine the route for that.
Okay, and then, I think you touched on it earlier, but if you were to not want this anymore, would you dismantle it and remove it from the property?
It's highly unlikely that that would happen, but yes, absolutely. And that can be a provision in the lease that, I think typically the way it's written is that we restore the property to its original condition to its two to five feet below grade.
Okay, and my last question is, how big a round are you envisioning? I know this is preliminary, but if you're looking for the coverage that you want?
As far as the diameter of the pole?
Right.
So I'm trying to think, the design that you put up there was, what, two antennas stacked? Maybe four feet?
Diameter?
Correct.
Is that at the base or all the way up?
That would be probably all the way up.
So just get one, four? Okay.
Yeah, so typically what you'll see on these flag poles, what they do, and there's some really bad ones out there, but what they do is, because when you get a milestone or a different company that is interested in leasing the space to a bunch of different carriers, they want to do that three antenna design that Lauren was showing you. And at the end of the day, when you do that design, it doesn't look like a flag pole. It looks like this fat, I mean, they're really, yeah, exactly. And you can put a flag on it, it doesn't make it a flag pole, so. So that's why, you know, we've discussed with Verizon, different antenna designs to decrease the diameter of that pole, so it really does look like one. And I did one on, that I can send you guys pictures of, on Old Town Parking Garage in downtown Gathersburg, which was a similar scenario, and it came out, you know, it came out, it looks like a flag pole, but it came out really nice. So you just have to make those adjustments with the RF design, which RF doesn't like to do. But when it comes to an area like this where it's all residential, they recognize that they've got to, you know, they've got to make those concessions to be able to build the right site for you guys.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that, and I appreciate you doing your due diligence on what has happened in Reston in the past. That's helpful for you, it's helpful for us as well. But I think what you're recognizing, I think Director Thompson said it best, it has to be an out-of-the-box, never-thought-of design versus, I'm just giving you a heads-up. And so I'm in a dilemma, because I know that if you were to go with today's presentation, it would be a no-go, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. So it's really, what do we, we sort of need to know what the possibilities are, because it has to be something so unique and so blended in that I can't fathom if that ability exists. I don't know. But I think we recognize the need for the service. Certainly recognize the value-add to us potentially there, but I just want to make sure that we're not wasting your time or staff's time on a start that is destined to fail day one. So I'm trying to get through that. I'll go back to Richard.
Yeah, I just have a question. Based on what you've just heard, if you were going to come back to us with out-of-box thinking, would you be willing to do it? And how long would it take you to do that?
I would be willing to do it.
Without any participation from anybody?
Well, a little history, I've been doing this for almost 20 years. And years ago, the most I could offer you, and I did one right here in Fairfax County, was I'm going to put up a slick stick, which is basically a monopole with the antennas on the inside, and paint it brown to the top of the tree line, and sky blue. I don't really know what color that is, because the sky changes color, you know, from there on up. That would be the best I could give you. Today, really, the sky's the limit. So if you guys are willing to give us some time to look into this further, what I would do is call one of our stealth manufacturers. We can literally stealth anything. If you can draw on a piece of paper, I can get someone to design it. So we can go back and look at some alternative creative designs, you know, outside of the standard flag pole, slick stick, tree pole, et cetera.
A week, a month, a year?
It would take more than a week, less than a month.
I would just like to toss out, since no motion has been made yet, I would just like to toss out that we defer this matter until the December regular scheduled December board meeting to give Starlink an opportunity to come back and remake this presentation to us to, and because if this board isn't, based on what we've been through over the years, if this board isn't comfortable with that you can get anywhere close on this, then I think it's the issue is what you just heard. We don't want to waste your time, and we don't want to waste our time.
Right, but she's saying that we have to give ideas. And what we're saying is, you need to engage in whatever your design process is with absent of input beyond, you know, I don't know, driving around the community, looking at some of our sites that are, you know, what is the North Reston Pavilion Site that's so pretty?
North Hills Park?
It's got beautiful stonework and-
Yeah, North Hills Park.
Yeah, something like that, and, you know, to get a sense of, you know, but something this big around?
No, that's okay. Why not go around the table? We'll start Danielle, and then we'll go back around again, just to get last comments.
Just maybe to put this in perspective for like numbers people. You had said roughly be about $1,500 a month, perhaps?
Eleven, fourteen.
Okay, I'll round it up to 1,500, because Ken's a good negotiator. Times 12 months is $18,000 a year. You divide that by the number of households, it's like a dollar per household increase. If we're thinking, what are we losing if we don't go forward with this?
And to also, to your point, excuse me, Verizon typically asks for a 25-year lease term. Obviously, it's negotiable, but that's where we'd like to be, so.
Okay, that's a good point.
Thanks, Danielle. You have anything more?
I've said plenty.
Okay. Mike?
I think the board said lots about, you know, we've seen lots of proposals like this. I don't see anything here. I would recommend that it come to the Board Planning Committee before we consider it at the board level. You know, I just don't see spending all the time with the board discussing this unless we believe in the planning committee that there's something substantial there.
Ellen, anything?
I kind of agree with what Richard said. We need to see another design before I can make any type of decision.
All right. John?
It does bring a couple of thoughts to mind to your board members. One is the reality that we've seen a number of times in the past with proposals. First of all, as Ken, as you pointed out, it's very difficult to get these things through the design process. But the reality is that one of the responsibilities we have to our membership, I think, is to recognize that the world is changing. We had spots over in South Lakes that had no 911, no reliable 911 service. And that's unacceptable. And if that's because of some design concept, then we've got some serious second thinking to do. So I think we do need to continue to look closely at proposals like this, because it truly is in the interest of our membership. Second part of what I'm taking away here is, this is one of the self-leg pole, kind of neat-looking pole. It seems to me to be somewhat considerably better than what I've seen in the past. This may have a shot. And then that leads me to my last point. Very frustrating that we should have a situation where there's no kind of pre-c consultation with the DRB. They're going to go off and try to invent ideas, only to bring back, and we say, no, go back and do it again, and again, and again. That's not the way to do this. Isn't there a way you could, not just for this project, but for everyone else who has to push the DRB, have some advanced planning? Sit down with people who have evaluated poles in the past. And talk about some of the design, you know, point them in that direction. I don't know how to do that, because I always ignore that stuff. Now I'm not ignoring it. So I feel a little frustrated. Maybe Kate and Larry have ideas on how to do that. Better put them in touch with the right people.
Well, I mean, we've done work sessions before with the DRB.
If not now, we are going to have to do this.
Well, the technology just changed. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
As you pointed out in your presentation, there's so many places that would be acceptable.
Richard, anything else? Listen to anything else?
Oh, yeah.
I want the income.
Yeah, well, as John was saying, like, I think one of the things we should look at is defining the problem first. Like, I had no idea that we have areas that can't call 911. I mean, that's a serious problem. So I think that, you know, it would be good to have like, have the problem defined. The second thing is that I agree with Mike that it should go to the planning committee before it comes to the board. And then we also, when the planning committee or when a proposal comes before the board, it would be good to know how it's aligned with our strategic goals and how overall it will conserve, protect, and enhance the value of our members and our real property. And then also, is it possible to get bids? Because if we are going to consider doing something like this, wouldn't it be better to get the highest value for our members and our assets? And typically, I know, we usually have like bids where we have multiple companies come to us with presentations and, you know, give a bid, and then we can pick the best one. I think you might want to look at that if we are going to consider any more of these proposals.
I'm willing to provide the firm the opportunity to wow the planning committee as well. But I think that needs to be your expectation, that it needs to be allowed to get even on the agenda again.
Yeah, absolutely. There's no question about the need. You know, I'm at the corner of Barron Cameron and Wheely, and I get no service. I've got an extender in the house, still don't get any service in the house. I was better off with the wired service, right? But, you know, I just know the time we went through with the previous provider, and it was just frustrating.
This was brought up at the prior BPC, for those that were there. It was discussed, why it's here today, or tonight. So we will continue to follow that process. So I think at the moment, I think we've given our guests the opportunity to hear us spout what the good, the bad, and the ugly of living and working and presenting something Reston is all about. I have two motions that I'm trying to bring back up here, or two options that I'm trying to find a machine to give me back. Hang on a second.
And every one of us on the cell phone at this moment, remember what we're talking about.
Can this thing be hurt by baseballs?
No, and we would put it in a net, we'll fence it and put netting over it, so you don't lose your balls into the fenced-in.
The double kids don't hit that power.
You don't know, you don't know.
I know, I coached over there.
What we have in front of us are two options for board motions. And so my thought is to read one at a time, to see how we feel about each.
Mr. President, I think that the discussion is that neither one of these motions are appropriate. Okay, so I think that instructions to the presenter, to go back to the drawing board, is the better approach. And if they go back to the drawing board and they come to the BPC with a better proposal, then the BPC will decide whether it's ready for primetime and come back to us, and hopefully, we can all get on the same page. But I don't think we should say we're going to go forward based on what we, I don't think we should tell them, go away.
Okay.
It's kind of-
That's what the dilemma I was facing as well. So do we necessarily need a motion versus just explaining the process? And so we'd like to have you-
Nothing to do with that. I mean, I wouldn't think so. Because we're not directing staff to do anything. We're not directing them not to do something.
If you're so willing, and I apologize, my batteries have gone out now too, but the, I would suggest that you allocate the time, if you're so willing, to, you know, digest what you've heard tonight, come back to something that could wow us. Feel free to communicate with Larry in terms of what your thoughts are, what have you. But if we have an opportunity at our December Board Planning Committee meeting to see that again, then we can go forward with possibly a better discussion in the December timeframe, if that makes sense.
Orks, Ross?
Fair enough. Well, thank you very much for taking the time and the late hour to be here. I don't know where you have to commute to now, but we appreciate you taking the time to be here this evening with us.
Thank you for being here.
We appreciate you too. Thank you very much.
All right.
I'm sure they learned a lot.
That's great.
Hopefully, it's not Cumberland, so. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Larry. All right. This is the one I've been waiting for.
Well, Mr. McBride.
It's funny, the most important thing in Reston's future, and everybody's gone. It's all right.
Thank you for waiting so long, John. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, John.
But all right, you all do yeoman's work. You've been here a lot longer tonight than I have. This is important, and it's important because it's an amendment to the Conference of Plan. As you recall, Fairfax did the Phase 1 amendments, which was the Dulles Toll Road Corridor. Now they're doing the rest of what used to be called the Reston Master Plan. The plan is important because it's a guide for the built environment and the natural environment 30 years forward. That guide is used for rezonings and all development applications within Reston. So that's a very important document. In fact, your governing documents still refer to the Reston Master Plan in how you view applications and how the DRB views applications and you view covenants. Well, this is nowadays, this is the Reston Master Plan. It's a countywide document, a countywide approved document, but this section covers pretty much just Reston. So the county's undertaking a year-long process, started last June, this past summer, and will end, projected to end, early next summer, late spring. In that process, I'm recommending that the RA Board, like we did on- In that process, I'm recommending that the RA board, like we did on Phase One, communicate its comments to the draft text that the county staff is providing, and to communicate that early and often to staff. It's an ongoing, evolving process. Now, there have been two community meetings, one in September, the most recent October 18th at South Lakes High School. The September 13th meeting was hosted by Reston Association here. There will be a third meeting, November 8th, and I don't think the location is set yet.
Aldrin Elementary.
Aldrin Elementary? Okay, it is set. That's November 8th. The county has a website on the Fairfax County Department of Planning and Zoning website. You can click to it and find citizen comments, RA comments, group comments, and the draft text itself. So it's very important for all Restonians to get engaged and make their comments known, both individually to the county planning staff on this website, there's a way to do that, and through you all, their elected representatives. Now, what I'm going to present tonight is our proposed comments for the Reston Association. Now, where did I collect these from? Well, I didn't just invent them. The comments are based upon other comments that have come out in the community. RCA Reston 2020 has plenty of blogs, letters, and comments, so those were reviewed. The 2010 Essential Elements of Reston were reviewed. The Phase One comments of this Reston board were reviewed. Some of our comments weren't accommodated in Phase One. Well, we get a second bite now. The draft sustainability charter for Reston was reviewed. The plan text for other areas of the county was reviewed. The PBAC recommendations and, as I said, community comments, both from meetings and on the website, were reviewed. So that's really where these recommendations come from. I'm proposing that this board present these recommendations in October, after tonight's meeting, to county planning staff, and then do it again a month later after your November board meeting. There might be a second draft out by planning staff, there might not be, but it gives us an opportunity to comment yet again. And there will likely be a final comment period in December, which is when county staff will be finalizing its text for presentation to the Planning Commission. So that's the schedule there. Now, let's look at a little history first, the Reston Master Plan. Originally, it was a private document, started by Bob Simon, Mobile Land, and others later. Here's the 1962 plan. Had five village centers, only had five convenience centers. They're kind of hard to see on this version. There was a commercial corridor along what was then just the Dulles Access Road. Lot of flexibility. This is really what's called a bubble plan, very flexible. The next version was done in 1971. There's beginning to be less flexibility and more specificity on this plan. You'll see the blue dots are the convenience centers. There's nine of them. So a lot of them have grown. This was the area of, or the era of the automobile. Convenience centers along major routes were very common, even in Reston. Now, observe, it's clearly Reston, even back in 1971, was a golf course community. Two major golf courses intertwined in the open space network. You can't take those golf courses away and keep the same open space network. 1973, changed again. Kind of a different style, for any of you that were around in 1973 in college or dressing. This does kind of suit what the dress code was like, too. A little more frilly, a little more color. Still a golf course community. The Barron Cameron commercial area at that time doesn't really look commercial, looks more residential. Unclear how many convenience centers are on this plan. It's almost too specific as far as being a general designed layout. Whoa, way too specific. It's gone too far from the bubble plan. So as you might think, what happened, 1989, got back to a little more flexibility, more of a balance. Now there's five convenience centers. Those are the blue dots. Still a golf course community, integrated into the open space, plenty of open space corridors, and five village centers. Now we jump forward to Fairfax County's draft plan. This is in the text of the draft plan that is out for public comment. This is a good balance of flexibility and specificity. You have seven convenience centers. We're going to be recommending that one of them be removed, which is the Lake Newport Convenience Center. Never was a convenience center. It was a sales office for Reston for a long time and has evolved into a quite nice little office complex. And that's the way, I think, county staff, and we agree, we recommend to you that it stay that way, so why keep the convenience center designation, which would allow more retail and more personal services there? Still, as a golf course community, you can see, they're clearly identified, they're clearly in the network of open space corridors. Still five village centers here. We're going to raise a proposition of Tall Oaks hasn't served as a true village center in the recent past and perhaps never can in the future due to various constraints, access, size, and location. So maybe that should be downgraded to a convenience center. That's what we're proposing, again, for your consideration and for the county's consideration because they're the ultimate approvers of this plan or determiners of this plan. The Barron Cameron commercial area, when you look, is retained as an existing commercial area, which serves a lot of residents. And what they've done is they've properly designated it now as a convenience center because it really is kind of a super convenience center. Now, there's some good maps that have been added by the county. They've worked with your staff, Larry Butler. This is the open space map, and the good part about this map, and I think Larry's still checking it for accuracy, but it shows how the public, county, Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority, and other public entities, the private, and the RA open space and rec properties all work together to form one seamless network of both natural open area as well as active recreational open area. To my knowledge, this is the first time that any Conference of Plan map for the Reston area has shown the integration of those public, private, and RA open space. Same thing with trails. We have a network of trails, again, Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority, Fairfax County has some, RA has the vast majority. But they all should work together seamlessly. They all should be planned to work together for the community. So those are good things about the plan. The plan text overall is an improvement. So why do we propose changes? Well, the changes we propose are going to be before you, they're in the colored redlining. The reason we propose them is that vision is so important because if you have the wrong vision or not a clear vision, how are you going to make the right land use decisions on zonings and development proposals? So let's look at the first one, just some of the things we're suggesting. Certainly adding, what we're talking, what staff is talking here about is the history of the planning sector. What is its character? Well, Reston is a community wherein its residents can live, work, and play. You see that all over this room. Everybody lives that mantra who lives in Reston. It should be in the Conference of Plan. Also, it's a key feature to have residential, commercial, recreational, and institutional uses in close proximity and with ample open space, not just open space, but ample open space throughout the community. The next one, the development of Reston was guided by the Reston Master Plan? That's correct. But it was also guided by the planned community deed covenants. The reason I don't say RA covenants is you have the Reston Town Center Association also, which has its own separate covenants. Originally, you had the industrial land also had a separate set of covenants. So the concept is to note that the development was guided by these two things, and in fact, it continues to be guided by these two things, which is somewhat unusual in Fairfax County. Now, this is the vision for Reston, just a few changes, but we think important changes. Reston is envisioned to be a place to live, work, play, and get involved. Again, the whole idea of Reston that's all around you in this room, in your magazines, and on your website. Getting involved does have relevance to the built environment. It's why you need plazas and community areas for people to gather and places to have meetings like this to discuss things. It does have a place and should be in the vision statement. The overriding goal of this plan is for Reston to continue to evolve in a sustainable manner over the next four or five decades. Sustainability concepts, they're in the plan as staff drafted them. We think they should be highlighted a little more and be consistent and put them wherever they're appropriate. Sustainability is a very big component of what makes Reston Reston. Bikeways and trails, another major issue in Reston. Bikeways and trails to improve and encourage non-motorized access throughout Reston, period. There shouldn't be a limiting qualifier on that of bikeways and trails only between certain things. In Reston, that network serves everything you do when you live here, work here, and play here. So that's a change. Next one down, kind of a sustainability concept, the sustainable design of the community lends itself to the preservation, should be protection and enhancement of parkland natural areas, clean lakes. That's really more the concept of sustainability, protecting and in fact enhancing over time for future generations. Down at the bottom there is just a recognition that the Reston Association, the county, and the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority maintain a certain number of trails within Reston, which I still need from Larry. It's an extensive number, it's a number to be proud of, and I think it emphasizes the character that future development needs to sustain and in fact enhance. Next one, dealing with sustainability again. Just changing the language a little bit in paragraph one, "Planning will encourage the application of sustainability principles in development and redevelopment." Blunt, plain, and simple. Instead of green neighborhood and building practices, it's broader than that. It really should be sustainable neighborhood and building practices. Next is an important point that came up, excuse me, came up in Phase One, and that's the linkage between infrastructure and land use. Not something that Virginia is a very favorable state to implement. It's very difficult. We think the language should be changed a little bit to say, "A key factor in the implementation of this coordination between development and the infrastructure needed to support it is the ability to fund these capital programs." Let's be upfront and transparent about that. The private sector should contribute its proportional share of these facilities, either in kind or through monetary contribution. This proportional share should be determined by the demand generated by the private development. Clear, fair, it's pretty much the way applications end up anyway. Why not state it clearly upfront so everyone knows what's expected? Now, the next part talks about village centers. They are important community gathering places. We've just expanded it to round out the mix of uses that will likely be in those centers as they redevelop. I think the Lake Anne redevelopment is a prime example. We do talk about urban residences and the village centers rather than suburban-type housing. But institutional uses are important as well as personal services. I think the most important change to this paragraph is down below where it talks about a plaza as a central element, and then to provide adequate transition, and we need to add an integration of surrounding neighborhoods to the village center. Again, Lake Anne is a good example of that concept. You really shouldn't be able to define where the boundaries of that village center are after it's developed. It should be a seamless integration with the surrounding residential areas. So integration is an important concept to inject. Now, we talk about connectivity and mobility will be strengthened. I think the draft Conference of Plan text is very strong in this regard. I think it can be improved by wherever possible, say, multimodal mobility on the road network, which could mean bike lanes, it could mean cars and transit. We want safe pedestrian and bicycle networks. That means some areas you may need an overpass. Reston has plenty of underpasses that were built in the past. There's no reason why safe pedestrian and bicycle networks can't be planned and developed, including the integration of shared and separate bike lanes. Now, the Conference of Plan is being amended elsewhere, another chapter of it, countywide for a bicycle plan and trails plan. That is underway now. The Planning Commission has given its recommendation. The board will be acting pretty soon. I think this language is consistent with that plan, but it should be in the Reston Master Plan component because shared and separate bike lanes are an important transportation network.
Are we taking questions at the end, or can I?
At the end, correct.
At the end?
Yeah, let's get through this because we have some time constraints. We have to meet here, too.
Yeah, I'll try to go quicker.
Oh, no, no, that's fine, no. It's in terms of extending our.
Yeah, the next one talks about recreational uses. Open space and natural areas were integrated into residential neighborhoods. Again, it was not just recreational areas, it was natural areas and open space. Reston was a place where nature was valued and protected. I think, again, it's important to set that character because that's the character that we want continued in the new development. The new plan does help balance the housing types while protecting existing neighborhoods. There's an emphasis in the village centers on some vertical higher-density residential as a possibility, and you'll see in some of our other comments. as a possibility, and you'll see in some of our other comments, we're recommending that universal design and senior housing be at least identified as something that's important to Reston in these village centers. That's really where senior housing should go. Next one is the convenience center office, which I think was that Lake Newport situation. We propose that that just be deleted and it just be in the text identified as its current office space. On village center mixed use, really just adding at the end, at the bottom, an important component is the public gathering and social interaction. That's an important component of a village center. The built environment of a village center as they redevelop should incorporate that important component and allow it to happen, even encourage it. The next one is additional public and institutional uses will be needed to accommodate new development. Their location will be established through zoning and 2232 applications. Again, something that in comprehensive plans many times is ignored or not thought of. They do take up space. They are development, but they're an important part of the community, so we need to be reminded that there will need to be additional public and institutional uses. Where should they go? We need to make room for them. The next one down was a comment, I think by RCA, Reston 2020, very good comment. Everything is not urban design. Reston has plenty of suburban design that is high-quality, good-character, and will retain. So, where we talk about a lot of things, it should be community design. There are places where urban design is the proper word or phrase, but not in every instance. So, we need to be careful how we use words in this plan. Next, to maintain continuity with the surrounding community, all new development and/or redevelopment must include green space, trees, and to the extent possible, undisturbed natural areas. I think that comes directly from, I think it's from the essential elements of Reston 2010, or it's in the sustainability charter or both. Again, down below, community rather than urban design, suburban design principles in the existing residential areas, not urban design. The bottom one is the safety issue with pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicles. Just mentioning overpasses, underpasses, and pedestrian-activated signals. There's quite a few of those needed in certain intersections, and new development should be cognizant of that. Conserving land, many references to preserving mature tree canopy and enhancing open space areas. This is one other place to reiterate that. I don't think it can be stated too many times in this plan. Next one down, mature trees are important, not just significant. Because when you say significant trees, you're cutting out a lot of mature, beautiful trees, and you're limiting yourself to something that's more of a specimen tree. So, it's mature trees, both individually and as a canopy in a network that's important. So, slight change to wording, but a big difference in concept. Key Reston characteristics include the provision of nearby diverse recreational opportunities.
John, I don't think you're on the right slide.
Yeah.
Am I off?
Yeah.
You need to advance my thing.
Thank you. Okay, here we go.
No, one more.
Is that right, conserving land?
Key characteristics.
Right. The second one is the characteristics. The next one is design sustainable infrastructure, buildings, and neighborhoods. This is a sustainability concept, adding the bullet encourage innovation and creativity, continuing to build the model sustainable community. Again, an objective that should be in the comprehensive plan. By the way, you guys passed. You are awake. Next one, housing diversity shouldn't just be available throughout Reston. It's a key feature throughout Reston. It's a key feature of the character of Reston and should be continued. Senior housing, as I said before, really the best place for that is within village centers. So, you have that social interaction and convenience of services. Next one again is a reiteration of pedestrian and bicycle networks should be rectified with new sidewalks, but also bike lanes, shared or separate, as well as trails. Reston is a golf course community, as the history showed in the master plan. That text should be in the comp plan somewhere. These courses are an integral part of the open space network in Reston, and we recommend that that language be clearly put in the comprehensive plan. The next one is important. Reston Association is a major provider of neighborhood recreational parks and amenities. I won't list all of them. Maintains and replaces, yeah, we do need to add one, don't we? Replaces these capital facilities through its annual operating and capital budget. As Reston's population increases, added capacity should be achieved through development contributions of land and/or facilities to meet the demands generated by the development or redevelopment. That is the same as county public infrastructure and facilities. You have the same demands. In Reston, some of what is done traditionally by the county is done by the RA. So, we need to be clear, we think, in the comprehensive plan about that. Now, the next one is very important. I think it is linked to sustainability. I couldn't find the best place to put it in the plan. We're open to suggestions, but I think throwing it out there for staff is a desirable thing to do. Reston is a place where farmers' markets and sheer garden plots are popular, providing convenient access to local produce. It is important to Restonians. You do have a substantial amount of garden plots per person if you average it compared to the rest of the county, and you do have farmers' markets. Again, village centers are prime spots for that type of activity. But it's something that would seem to be a character of Reston that should be emphasized. The next one, we're just adding Reston's Stream Restoration and Preservation Program. There's other language in the plan about that. On the fringe of Reston, there's an area Fairfax Hunt Club where staff is, and the comprehensive plan for a long time, has had an alternative development for residential uses. If it does develop residentially, it's on the edge of Reston. It really is a functionally integral part of Reston if it's turned into residences. And in the event this parcel is redeveloped for residential use, then the new residential neighborhood should be incorporated into the planned community of Reston. There's an important concept there. Again, the universal design techniques and accommodate senior living should be one of the factors to consider in multifamily redevelopment within Reston. Next, we're talking about the village centers. Four of the five act as village centers now. As I said before, Tall Oaks really does not for various reasons. These four, excluding Tall Oaks, would be planned to allow currently-approved intensities and densities to remain, but are envisioned to also accommodate some more intense vertical mixed-use redevelopment in the future to fully, not more fully, but to fully achieve the goal of being vibrant centers of activity. Senior housing and universal design residences are encouraged to be located in village centers.
John, could you pause for just a second?
Yes.
We need to extend the length of the time of the meeting past 11 o'clock.
Okay.
Fairness for just a moment.
I move to extend this evening's board meeting to midnight. Do I hear a second?
So.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Come on.
Anybody abstaining? All right, it passes.
Was that Jeff or?
That was me.
Jeff.
Yes, thank you.
Regurgitating.
I am almost done. I'll do my part to get through.
You take your time. We backed you into this corner, please. Your time is important.
Next, we're talking about the general vision for the village centers. Again, the main point would be residential uses should be integrated with the non-residential uses in public spaces. No demarcations. You can't tell the difference. They're integrated with each other. Adding public plazas and outdoor meeting spaces are a key element for the village centers. These should be large enough to accommodate farmers' markets or other community events. Again, that's social interaction elsewhere in the plan that we talked about. Under village center excellence in site design and architecture, uses should be integrated around a public gathering space which creates a unique sense of place and which is integral to the design. Each village center, again, Lake Anne is a good example of what they're doing or trying to do, is create a unique sense of place for that village center. So, each village center would have a different character and sense of place. Next one, fairly minor, but it did come up in last Saturday's meeting. This deals with connectivity, and connectivity should be provided for all modes of transport, including pedestrian, bicycle, transit, vehicular, and if appropriate, watercraft. Watercraft access to the village center areas is important, and the design and redevelopment of those centers should not preclude that, as they almost did at South Lakes. And President Kenevenin did not suggest that, by the way.
But I love the idea.
Tall Oaks Village Center, that's the one that's the smallest of the five village centers. Consideration should be given to a redesignation of this center as a convenience center. So, it would still have a mix of uses, some convenience to the local neighborhood for retail and other personal services, but the rest of the area perhaps could be repurposed to something else, institutional or residential. It just doesn't function as a village center, so why perpetuate that fiction? Or at least allow it to go to something else. Lake Newport, again, we talked about its designation as a convenience center. It really hasn't functioned that way. Probably shouldn't be a true convenience center in the future under any redevelopment. So, keeping the existing use and deleting the designation would be appropriate. Barron Cameron, the area north of Barron Cameron, the commercial area, I think staff is spot on by designating that a convenience center and keeping the retail character and intensities as is. There was some discussion to make that an extension of the Reston Town Center, and over the years, that's gone back and forth on the Reston Master Plan. Our recommendation to you is that that would create a lot more problems than the benefits derived, and staff is correct in designating this as a convenience center and keeping it the way it is. That's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your indulgence.
Well done.
Well done.
Thank you.
Why don't we start at this? Danielle, why don't we start with you? Any comments or questions for John?
The Barron Cameron Community Retail Area. What stores are there now? Are you talking about the Home Depot or the other side?
Home Depot.
The Home Depot side.
What do you mean by the other side? I mean, Home Depot, and it goes to the west to the edge of Herndon.
Versus Harris Teeter, Office Depot.
Oh, no. I'm sorry. North of Barron Cameron.
All right. I just have to ask, I saw grave cemetery with mixed in with residential.
No, at Hunt Club.
The Hunt Club. What was that about?
The Fairfax Hunt.
Did you see that? Yeah, I did. Okay.
Questions? The Fairfax Hunt Club actually has a cemetery either on the property or next to it. That is existing comprehensive plan language. It's private recreation now, but there's an option for redevelopment as residential. All we're saying is if it does redevelop residential, it should be done integral to Reston and basically come under all these Reston characteristics as far as what that redevelopment will look like and what it'll be.
Thank you.
You?
I have no questions.
Any comments?
Just, as always, just a really good job. Really, a good job.
Thank you.
Mike?
A good job, but a question about community engagement in soliciting comments and whatnot, what that process is, and how can we be most impactful? I think this is a great start, and I think that it would have been valuable to have some of our community leaders hear this because there's been lots of discussion about, you know, we're heading in the wrong direction in terms of engaging with developers and whatnot. And I think the principles that are being outlined here are absolutely the things that will preserve the character of what Reston is. And so, we need to have a process that brings the community together as part of this. I think that's something that we as the board should be concerned about.
I think your staff has thought about that, and we've talked about it. Obviously, the county has its process. It's got the website. It's got community meetings. There are plenty of ways for individual Restonians to find out and engage themselves. RA, through this effort, I'm assuming we're going to put this on the website.
Correct.
The comments. And the beauty of it is, we'll be back next month for other comments, and hopefully we'll have engagement by the community and a lot of good comments of theirs to incorporate. Because quite frankly, it's kind of like midterm federal elections. Nobody's paying attention because you go to the community meetings, the one hosted by RA has the most attendance. The other ones, the attendance really wasn't that high, given what's at stake here. What the reason for that, you know, who knows? I think the best we can do is put the word out and do it through RA, through RA's staff, and hope that the word gets out.
And Mike, at my, the last Gang of Five meeting, which Kate was a part of with RCA, Arch, and others, they asked, "What can we do to help you?" And I said specifically this, and that's where you're seeing a lot of collaboration. Sometimes we agree to disagree, or sometimes we just blatantly disagree on things, but this is where I've asked, we've asked Shridhar, Tammy, Terry, Jerry, if he's still here, to get to their constituents, because this is, again, a one-voice kind of play.
I think it's great. I think getting RCA and Arch and those other bodies in alignment with us.
Well, it's not so much alignment, but get them to broadcast out to their constituents.
Well, and get it to their constituents as well. You know, I think that we want to have a shared vision of what Reston is all about. The other piece of this, of course, are committees, the existing RA committees, which are really our family, and that's DRB, it's EAC, it's TAC, and, you know, PVA.
They've been integral in this process from the beginning.
True enough, but there's times when we've got a document like this with this draft language, getting them to focus on it. You know, they may be aware of it, but getting them to focus on it, I think that if this were to be presented to EAC, most of the members of that committee if this were to be presented to EAC, most of the members of that committee would fully support and endorse this, and that creates alignment between the board and that committee, and perhaps gives us some ideas as to how to, to push the agenda further with them. Just a suggestion. I see her nodding, and she's.
Yeah.
Right. And just to reiterate, the county itself is trying very hard to get that engagement also. They've offered to meet with clusters and other groups, and I know the supervisor's office is, is trying very hard too. So I, maybe there's more engagement than it looks like, maybe people are happier with it, but I'm with you, it'd be nicer to see a little more engagement and dialogue, and I think your staff is doing everything they can.
Absolutely.
And I fully expect the committees to look at this along with everyone else.
Yeah.
And Mike, if I may, and, you know, we'll get this out to the committees, I wanted our council to provide the input to get to this group first before we push it out.
I think that, I'm very confident that the committees that I've been interested in working in would fully support what's here. And I think that would take a lot of the antagonism out of the conversation.
I will get that out to them personally tomorrow and directly do it is on the website so they can look through it and take it out.
John is always very comprehensive and very enlightening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Yeah, ditto. I'm just really impressed and appreciate, the presentation this evening is spot on.
Outstanding.
Very, again, I think this is very easy for anybody to interpret as to what's happening here, so thank you for the hard work, and thank you to the staff that are diligently hanging in there with us tonight for being a part of this as well. Kate, anything else?
No.
John?
Except thank you very much.
Except the comment, this is one of the smallest things we've done in years, will we secure John's services.
I, I agree.
I must say that PowerPoint makes it, and Russ Borno did that by planner, so I can't take all the credit for that.
I was just going to say, your PowerPoint presentation skills are getting honed nicely.
Russ, I'm a dinosaur when it comes to that sort of thing.
You deliver well.
Yes. Know what I want to see in it, and he makes it happen.
Anything else, Richard?
Yes, so one of the glaring omissions that I see in the draft language is this notion that virtually everything that they are talking about in terms of redevelopment or new development is going to have to come to the DRB.
Well.
Not everything, but virtually everything.
You're saying that's not in there?
It's not in there.
Well, that's, that's why, the way to do it in a comprehensive plan, which is a guide, is to talk about the private community covenants, and we had other references in the Phase One text that reference the RA, and that's the way you do it because remember, the Reston community is not just RA.
And I understand.
It's broader than that, so.
And I think you inserted some, you know, some coveted land or.
Right, yeah, we've inserted that concept in there, so I think that's the best we're going to get in a county comprehensive plan document.
Okay, the, the other piece is, are we making a mistake by not having a Reston Association master plan?
No. As a matter of fact, you would not have any legal authority to do it, at least not with the plan that would be meaningful enough for you to be able to implement or regulate that plan, and then what you're doing is setting up your members for disappointment.
But we have, we have the authority, let me, let me, and I use Reston Association master plan, but I know that there is a proposition for urban design guidelines. Well, so let's, let's take out plan or master plan and substitute guidelines, because it seems to me, and I know that we've discussed this tangentially over the years, that we have guidelines, but we don't have an overriding policy or set of guidelines that says, and maybe it ties into the concept of the urban design guidelines, but, you know, as Ed Abbott mentioned, you know, lighting, all these other things that should be driving the more granular guidelines. I mean, and we've talked about it in different directions, but maybe it's time for us just to take the sustainability, the environmental, the, all of this other stuff and put together this comprehensive document.
Well, I.
Guides whatever else, what we do and what we approve or disapprove.
Now I know, now I know what you're saying, it's really not a master plan or a comprehensive plan, it's, it's a set of guidelines for your DRB and for your decision-making. In fact, your staff is working on that right now. Richard, the first thing to do is to get it in the, into the county's vision for Reston and the county's regulatory process to get all those elements. That's what this comprehensive plan effort is all about, but you can't stop there. The next thing is, as far as your own Reston Association powers and covenant powers, you need to come up with, and we've talked about it with staff and the committees, of coming up with a, a clear list and review all the previous documents, like the essential elements of Reston, how to develop in Reston, all sorts of statements by this board over the years, trying to compile those and put those into a more contemporaneous, that this board can approve, set of documents that really constitute design guidelines, I think we were calling them. Some of them are more aspirational, others are more, more requirements and objective requirements that the DRB would enforce, so you have a whole tier, and actually you've got quite a few design guidelines now, and I think we need to come up with appropriate terminology so all these documents work together. Right now, it's kind of a jumbled puzzle, but that is something that staff has talked to us about, that once, once we get this done, that would be a next step, and I think Kate's already initiated those steps.
And then the last point I was going to make, it came up on the 18th, a couple of the discussions, and you kind of address it, or you do address it in terms of the integration of the surrounding residential areas.
Which aren't that well done now on some of the village centers.
Exactly, okay, and most people don't realize that for all of the village centers, there is an existing residential component in the village center.
Yes.
Okay, and so the plan talks about protecting the existing residential neighborhoods, but in the case of the village centers, that may not be desirable.
That's correct.
Because the, the reorientation and the integration and the, and the placemaking that might need to take place in a village center could involve nuking an existing residential area and replacing it with, you know, with something else, another residential area that is more, is better integrated.
Yeah, vertically integrated and plaza set.
Yeah.
I think that's why you see in the comp plan, the village centers are treated separately, and there's text relating to that concept that's different than the neighborhood preservation concept.
I, I think it's a little gray, and it's, and I say that because a number of other people have mentioned it as well. Wait a minute, if you're telling me that you want to do this, and this has a residential neighborhood, but over here you're telling me I can't do anything with that residential neighborhood, that's conflicting.
Yeah, good point. We'll consider that and.
Yeah. That's it.
Again, we'll have more than one additional chance to fine tune this, but that's a good point.
Oh, I, I have two topics, a lot of my comments were already addressed, but transportation and tree canopy, and there was no address of the tree canopy conservation. I mean, there was a little bit about the mature trees, but I think that that's a pretty large issue, and there's going to be significant changes to the tree canopy in Reston, and that's one of the things that our residents really like, so it'd be nice to bring it up more or somehow address it more strongly.
Well, if, and again, you weren't on the board during the Phase One, but we made a lot of insertions on tree canopy in Phase One, so you won't see it on my highlights tonight because it's already in there.
Okay.
So we're just adding to that, but please let me know, let, through Kate know.
I'll send you the sections that we added on tree canopy.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the whole thing, it's throughout the document, we were, and staff was very helpful in that regard, once they realized how important it was to Reston, because it is a key element. When you drive on Sunrise Valley, you know when you're leaving Rusty, Reston and the mature tree canopy is one key element of knowing where that line is. So read, read the whole document if you still think there are places where it needs to be added, please let us know.
Yeah, I, because I've seen, like, you know, there's a lot of language about it, but then I don't see it in practice, so I, I mean, that's another issue.
That's a different story, we've got to set up the vision first, and then how you implement that vision is, is another thing to work on.
Yeah, so then on transportation, there, there's a really big connection between transportation and land use and zoning, so I, I have a couple points, like, one is that, like, the convenience centers where that one is, you want to designate it to office, like, right now it might be a good office space, but it might be even better as a convenience center in the future, or, or having the ability to have more of those services integrated into the residential areas.
Well, we looked at that, and that site on Lake Newport with its access and there's, it isn't convenient as a retail center for surrounding neighborhoods, so it's, it's just, I think it was an aberration, it was a nice sales center and they had to categorize it as something, so we did do that analysis to take a look at that, and that's, just doesn't work.
Especially with the Lake Anne development, right across the street.
Do you know where it is, Lucinda?
It's the, right next to Brown's Chapel Park. There's an office building there, Tetra Park. It's, it's, I don't know.
It's hard to get into it, there's tons of speed bumps all throughout it.
Private tennis courts.
Private tennis courts.
Oh.
Anyway.
Okay.
And it's right near another convenience center and right near Lake Anne Village Center too, so it's just not the appropriate place.
And then we talked about the integration of the village centers with the residential communities. We, like, also, there needs to be corridors or connections, like, that are pedestrian and bike friendly between the residential and the village centers and the convenience centers. For example.
We broaden that to that type of multimodal connection to everything in Reston, not just those, but everything, so I think we're covered there, but again, read it and see.
Well, yeah, I mean, because you, you're, I think when you say that, you, you say, like, put in a bike lane, but what I'm saying is that it's also land use, so somebody might be willing to walk a mile if there's, like, really cool retail stores along that mile corridor, as opposed to walk a mile, you know, in a residential neighborhood. It's, it's just, it's, it's important to look at the land use and the zoning as, including the transportation modes.
Yes, it is, and I think if you look at the overall pattern, there's a great diversity to where you're going to have those walkable corridors primarily in the new development and in the town centers. Your residential neighborhoods are going to be kept pretty much the way they are, so there are going to be many different types of, of walkable communities. Some, your traditional suburban neighborhood, some, your new, in the corridor, first floor retail, high-rise residential, where you are willing to walk a mile, just like you are in Washington DC or something.
When you say corridor, you mean the Dulles Transit?
Yes.
Yeah, see, what, I, I'm meaning like corridors that lead, we need to connect the residential areas to those commercial areas, and, and I don't just mean with cars, I mean, we need to connect them with land use and things that make walking and biking more attractive, and that means a, a commercial corridor, connecting the communities and the residential areas to the convenience centers.
Or you can only have so much commercial tenants, I mean, that's the Tall Oaks situation, you don't have enough residential to support that, so I, I don't think ribbons of commercial, to be quite frank with you, is economically feasible to do that. Maybe there's other land uses or parks or institutional uses that could make that connection, but I don't think there's going to be enough, because remember, the corridor itself is going to have a very significant amount of new retail because they're trying to get that urban city feel, the Boston feel, to where you're going to have restaurants, personal service, retail on the first floor throughout. That is a lot of businesses, that, if we're not careful, that's going to suck the life out of the other businesses in the convenience centers and maybe even the village centers, so you have to be careful about that.
Okay, next topic. So when, when you, throughout the document, you've addressed, like, pedestrian and bike facilities, and I, I wasn't able to, like, write down all the page numbers, but I think basically, in the interest of time, wherever it's addressed to have pedestrian, bike, and transit amenities, you should make sure that all three modes are included, and it would be really great to add also bus stop amenities, because, like, if a developer is proposing something, we want to make sure that they're covering the cost for the infrastructure to support that added development, and one of those things would be to have bike parking, like you said, bike lanes, but it would also be to have transit stops with better signage and seating and shelters, and I think you could add that easily where you have, you know, the, the bike lane amenities, also add bus stop amenities.
I'll take a look at that, I, I think staff thinks it's already in there, but I'll take a look at that.
There's no bus stop amenities in there.
No, I mean, the language about the trans, transit stops and the overall language.
Yeah, because there's more, the comprehensive plan, the two phases, Phase One, there's quite a bit in there, and what we're focused on now is kind of the second portion of that, so we'll go back and take a look. As well, Lucinda, we have a seat on the supervisors' transportation review group.
100, 100.
No, this is actually different, specific to the comprehensive plan.
Oh.
First meeting was last week, and actually, one of the brand-new appointees to the Pedestrian and Bicycling Advisory Committee, Rory Rowan, is also on the committee, so he and I are advocating for the connectivity beyond the Dulles corridor, and in fact, he has, he has made some comments to staff to make sure that that does get included in their study, so definitely focused on that.
Yeah, and you will, you will find when the transit stations come through in Reston going west for the special exceptions, that those type things will be considered in the special exception, in that there's a whole separate chapter of the comprehensive plan on transportation, which includes transit and transit-related improvements, there's language in there, so, good point, if you see any specific areas where you think it may fit in cleanly, please, again, suggest them, and we'll, we'll take a look at them and put them in there.
That's all.
Okay.
John, outstanding job.
Thank you.
Just, this is fantastic, I had, in the next time I'm going to probably, I would be real great. I, I think the, our community engagement efforts need to be quadruple.
Absolutely.
On this stuff.
Absolutely.
And Kate, maybe we can talk about how we, how we can do that through the RA News and have feature stories every single time the RA News goes out, because, you know, I, you know, our, our members are concerned about putting in a bocce ball court, and we're talking about putting in multi-story, you know, I saw hotels and other amenities at the village centers, so I don't think there's the level of awareness in the community about the impact. I don't think there's the level of awareness in the community about the impact that the changes proposed in the master plan are going to have on the nature of some of our local neighborhoods. And we, we need to quadruple our efforts on outreach.
As, as we did last year with the COP Plan, we'll definitely hold a community meeting that's hosted by us to highlight what's most interested, what's most interesting to us and we want to make sure gets in the plan. So we did that about this time last year and had overflow at this entire conference center, as well as space downstairs and YouTube-ing the event, which was a very well-done event. And we'll definitely do the same thing as, as we get more text and we're able to create an impression on that. But I've already, as we've been sitting here, Kirsten and I have been talking back and forth about the importance of getting stories out on this, now that we have something to present. We didn't have anything until this evening. And I appreciate John's effort on that, so you can get the message out.
Okay. But that's, yeah, from my, from where I'm sitting right now, our, our community engagement is, we've got to step up our game in a lot of areas.
And I would argue that we should spend the majority of our board time talking about these issues. You know, this is far more important than everything else we've talked about today and probably the last couple of board meetings. This is, this is really defining the future of Reston. And I think it's truly consistent with what I've been hearing from most of our members about what they would like to see. And in the vacuum, they get many different ideas about what it is developers are doing, or what RA is doing with a land use attorney on board. You know, I think this is going to provide a lot...
Today.
True enough. True enough.
Did just get it today, so.
Yep. And my, my next question is more of an informational, educational thing for me. With the, with the proposed change, I don't want to say change, but the potential for change in densities at the village centers, how exactly does that process work? Because you, I thought I heard you say that they were already zoned for additional capacity than they currently have. Did I hear that right? Or is what's being proposed is a change to increase the allowable density?
Yeah. Let me, let me talk about that. I didn't say that, but I know probably where you heard it from. The existing zoning of any village center could be changed now to higher intensities under the current scheme. What this comprehensive plan does is it sets a vision and it says, "We envision these village centers to keep their same development intensity. But if they redevelop, here's the characteristics we want to have, part of which is increased intensities to allow, to inject more senior housing and more multifamily housing there." Again, all village centers can't do that. Some are more appropriate than others. And what the county envisions is, you set up that, that vision, and then whoever wants to do that, whoever has a good idea of how that can be done, they come in, like they did at Lake Anne Village Center, they come in with the COP Plan Amendment that's very specific and a rezoning. And you pretty much come in almost at the same time with that proposal. But that is judged by this language we're talking about now for the village centers.
So those decisions, whether to increase, if, if the county decides they want to allow for increased density...
That's a totally separate public process that you have to go through.
Rezoning thing, but that's controlled by the county.
Rezoning thing.
And we don't have, other than as an interested party, we don't have any say over that.
Don't have any say. You have influence.
Influence.
Because now we have a new process and a new...
Right, right, right.
New partnership with the county on how we focus...
Right.
Reston communities' comments to make sure that it's done correctly. Correctly meaning as far as what Restonians think.
And anything in the village centers, any development, any redevelopment has to be approved by the DRB.
Then you have the DRB also.
Because it's just what the county says.
Right.
Okay. It's got overlays.
Yeah, that's your extra layer.
Good. That's not what I'm looking for.
But the other thing, Jeff, to remember is, this isn't going to happen in two years, in 10 years, in 15 years, maybe 20.
Thirty-year horizon.
But, okay, because the economics of the existing village centers, for instance, North Point being the newest, there's no plan, there's no need, unless something dramatic happens, for them to mow that down and build something new, whether it's a two-story building or a 30-story building. Okay? You know, the, the owners of South Lakes have said, "Not even, not even in our wildest imagination right now are we planning on doing anything other than trying to get through the restriping process."
For the sake of the lateness of the hour, I, I think, you know, is there any other comments for, for counsel at this point in time? He's been here all night with us. And I want to give him the opportunity to take anything else that we have. There's a lot to go with this. There's a motion that I'd like to review with you guys, if I may, regarding this. I'd like to move to direct staff to prepare a letter to be signed by myself, to be sent to the appropriate Fairfax County officials, staff, and agencies incorporating and recommending the points and proposed amendments to the straw man version, September 5th, 2014, of the draft Phase Two Comprehensive Plan text for Reston as prepared by legal counsel.
Second.
Is that in our packet?
No, I just read that.
Oh, okay. Can you read it again?
Move to direct staff to prepare a letter to be signed by myself, Ken Keneven, President of Reston Association, to be sent to the appropriate Fairfax County officials, staff, and agencies, incorporating and recommending the points and proposed amendments to the straw man version, September 5th, 2014, of the draft Phase Two Comprehensive Plan text for Reston as prepared by legal counsel.
Are we going to discuss?
We just did.
Well, we didn't discuss the motion.
Well, first, let's ask for a second.
Our second.
Oh, thank you.
Our second.
All right. All right. Let's go around the table. Jeff, any comments?
Uh, no, I think it's a good idea that we speak as, as a body.
Okay. Lucinda?
Well, I agree that we should speak as a body. However, we just had a lot of discussion about community input and the advisory committees and everything. And this is the first time we've seen this tonight. And, you know, it's 11:30, and I don't understand why we can't take the time to get more input from other entities and ourselves.
Won't we do that, though?
Yeah, it's, let's continue. Richard, do you have any other comments? Okay. Richard?
Yeah. I mean, my understanding is that this is just a step.
Yeah.
In a long process.
Yes.
Including, one of the next steps being a broader exposure with our committees and the community at large.
Yeah. This is, this is ongoing. We've got to start.
This is, this is getting our foot, getting our comments in for their consideration, as John said early on.
It's going to go through many iterations.
They're not going to go in and modify that draft with everything that we were asking for.
How many versions of the Phase One draft did work?
Nine.
Nine. Were, so this has got a ways to go. I'd like to get us in the door now. Okay. John? Ellen?
I agree. I, the letter, yeah.
Um, I agree with the letter, but, you know, to Jeff's point and the point that Lucinda was making, I think that having an explicit motion that directs staff to work with the committees to create a, an engagement process for the committees and the community. You know, you're already in discussions with Hurston. We've had a process that's been going on for the last year and a half to sort out how to create alignment with the development cycle, if you want. I think that we've got something now that folks can glom onto. This is, this is now tangible. And so rather than wait, I think that in parallel, having that process explicit and clear would be helpful. And it may be simply going back to, you know, the earlier work that John and his team had done about where we can be most effective in terms of communicating with the county and otherwise. But I, I agree with Jeff. We need to quadruple the, the engagement. And I would also say that this has got to really be the sorts of things that this board struggles with, because this is, this is the future of, of Reston and the community. And we're the only body that can do it. So, send the letter. Let's have a process.
Yes, I think we should send the letter. I, I think that, obviously, how you craft a, the expectations around the process, because this is, it's not...
Absolutely. All about.
Well, I mean, engaging the county, as I recall from the last time, is not a simple process. And it's, you know, you're negotiating for words and stuff like that. And so we want, I think you have to be careful about the expectations you create with the committees, because, you know, we don't want a situation where the committee thinks, "Oh, well, you, I put in this about tree canopy and bike trails and, and the county took it out." And there's that constant struggle between how much detail, how prescript, you know, how detailed it is versus how general it needs to be in order to successfully engage. So that's all. I just would be concerned.
John, do you want to add anything to that?
I think that's a very good point, controlling expectations of, of the community.
Managing, managing.
And especially managing expectations of the committees, because in fact, it's, you know, it's not totally a level playing field.
Right. I mean, we're engaged in the county's process. It's not our process. That's the thing.
Exactly.
We're, to the degree they're letting us in, we have to...
Let them keep letting us in.
Yeah.
I agree. We should send the letter.
Okay.
No comment?
Just on comment, of course, we do have a process that we can, it's already in place that we can utilize. We invite John to come in and make a presentation to our Development Review Group, which includes participation by all of the committees.
Right.
So why don't we use that to inform them as to what's going on? And internally, as, and I want to work with John very closely as to the timing of when we have a community-wide meeting.
Absolutely.
Because I will do just what we did before, and that is let the entire community know about that and invite them to come and hear what's going on, so that they can individually also push their concerns and comments and interests on the COP Plan text. So I'd like to follow the same process that we did the last time, because I think it worked very well for us in association, to be named as many times as we were in the comprehensive plan. And the committees were integrally involved as well. They were attending the Reston Master Plan meetings and, and providing input to it. So I'm confident, we already have a, a process in place, and I will definitely follow it. We couldn't do anything with it until we had the text in hand and could, and could comb through it. And we waited until after last Saturday's meeting or the eight, meeting on the 18th, because we needed that village center feedback in order to put a good piece together for your consideration, for the community's consideration. So a lot of time and effort was put into what John put together. And definitely will get it before the committees.
It's short turnaround, too.
Very quick turnaround time. We've been, we've been spending a lot of time with county staff as well, making sure that the maps and things like that, to Shaw, included Reston Association property, because they didn't. If you remember the very first meeting, they didn't. So a lot of good effort on Larry's part and John and his team to get that done. Thank you.
No problem.
I was just going to add that, in terms of engagement. I think we should strongly encourage the committee members to show up on the 8th.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a, that's an excellent idea.
That's their way to participate.
Yeah. And they've been lacking at the last two public meetings.
I agree. So the point is...
As liaison folks, please express that to your committees, you know? Show up at these things.
Because the point is, as has been said, this is not our process.
Right.
This is the county's process.
Right.
If you, as a committee, as a, as a special interest group, want to influence this process, get your tail to these meetings.
That's for...
Yeah.
And get behind the...
So don't, don't, don't come back and say, "We didn't engage you."
Right.
No, you didn't participate.
And it's up to us to encourage them to do it. You know, I think that we've got a, we've got a plan that, and a letter, we're going to be sending to the, the county. So there's alignment there. We want to bring the committees into alignment as well.
Given I'm running out of time again, let me bring this to the vote, if I may. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is anybody opposed? Is anybody abstaining? Great. Thank you. All right. See how we do here.
I move to defer item K until the...
It's just discussion.
I mean, I would move to defer it to November unless somebody says that December would be better.
I'm comfortable with that, because it was only discussion tonight.
I second that.
Unless you want to address the proposal that was put before you yesterday...
Good point. Yeah.
And you want to put a process in place to consider that.
Yeah. Let me, let me put it to this, where there's no action to be taken tonight. These were here for, just for your comment and review, and to look at the two items, the redlined items, the two redlined items, as well as the completed items as we stand right now. So that, we were just looking for your feedback and comment on this when we will come to incorporating these amendments in the November 20th board meeting.
Yeah. What I, my proposal is to defer the, the, item K, which is a discussion item, to the November 20th board meeting.
I second it.
Yeah. All right. Comments? We'll start with Jeff.
I think it's late, and we should defer, for sure, to the government.
What item was it?
Governance.
Governance.
Item K.
Board planning, governance.
Um, keep, Lucinda, we have yours.
I agree. I, I think we should hold out.
Richard, I have your motion. John?
Yeah, me too.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
With tremendous aggravation.
Oh, absolutely.
Just like, un-freaking-believable that we can't get this done. And yes, I know I'm on YouTube.
Well, we're not going to address what the emails that were sent yesterday.
Uh, I am intending to go to that next.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. That's a whole different...
Because that's a separate item. But first, we have a motion on the table, so we have to conclude that. So all of those in favor of the motion as read and, or stated and seconded by, stated by Richard?
Seconded by Lucinda.
Lucinda, please signify by stating aye.
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 Is anybody opposed? Me? Anybody abstaining? All right. There is a second part to this. Yesterday, we did, I think, all receive the separate proposal to establish an ethics committee. And that's in the Dropbox folder, if you don't, haven't seen it. Without object, and I'm, without objection, I'm requesting staff, in coordination with the board, to identify a mutually convenient date, time, place, to meet in open session to discuss the feasibility of establishing an ethics committee, including the proposal submitted by Director Muir.
That's a great idea.
Seconded. Without objection? Good. All right.
Does it need feasibility or necessity?
I know. Good point.
I know what you said.
Fair enough. Thank you, folks. All right.
That's another discussion.
Last, is, last item. Kate, it's late, and I know, but I did read your management report, so hopefully everybody else did. But please, take your time.
I'm not going to take my time on that. I'm not going to keep everybody up. The only thing I did, two things I wanted to do. In the report, we talk about merchandise that we have available and member services. This is our gift to you.
Okay.
So what's sitting before you is for you, with the tea included. You can thank Sabrina and Lisa.
This is Reston tea? I didn't know this.
So that's in one piece.
Is it worth more than $5?
No, no.
Don't worry. It's $4. It's right. It's $4. Now, to back up, there is one other thing that I wanted to give you, that I did not have the time to put into the management report with the capital projects. Several of you have asked what projects we have in the budget that relate to a particular district. district. So I'm going to hand down the table to you, and we'll make it available electronically tomorrow or Monday. Uh, it shows you in a yellow column what capital projects relate to Lake Anne, Tall Oaks, South Lakes, Hunterswood, Dogwood, and/or North Point. And we will be working, uh, when we put together the 2016-17 budgets, to be able to delineate this type of information. I've also gotten several requests for you to understand what kind of amenities are in each district. That's not a problem to put together. I ask you to bear with me and my staff as we put together a comprehensive package for you, but that's just an additional item to the CEO board. That's all I have for the segment.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. All right, um, there are a couple, do you have an executive session item?
We need to discuss the matters of personnel.
Fair enough. Um, I move that we go into an executive session, and I don't think it'll be long, um, to discuss personnel matters with legal counsel. Yeah, and, yeah, we'll do that as well. Okay, let me back up, I just, just noticed the clock, yeah. First, let us move to extend the, the meeting time. I move to extend the, uh, board meeting to 12:15.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Thank you.